The session is called to order. Everyone is requested to rise for the singing of the Philippine national anthem. Please remain standing. The Honorable Tony Bravo of Partilis Coop Natko will lead us in prayer.
Let us put ourselves in the presence of the Lord. Heavenly Father, we stand before you in humble prayer before we start with the session today. We pray for guidance in the matters at hand so we could produce the best decisions and result beneficial to our consequence. Show us how to deal with our work and responsibility to the public with enthusiasm and joy. Grant us wisdom and strength as we go on with our daily endeavors to make sure that our work is in accordance to your will. Help us to work together and encourage each other to do what is just and right. We thank you for the many blessings that you shower us and may we learn to share these blessings to the people who need them most. Amidst issues in conflict impacting our society, we pray for a peaceful resolve. We pray in the name of your son Jesus. Amen.
The majority leaders recognized.
Madam Speaker, I move that we call the roll of members. I sumo, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is directed to call the roll of members.
Roll call of members, honorable representatives. Abad... Ah, Abayon, Abaya, sorry. Abaya. Abayon. Abiliyanoza. Abu. Abueg. Acharon. Akop. Acosta. Acosta Alba. Adjok. Adbingkula. Agaraw. Agabao. Aglipay Bilyar. Albano. Alcala. Alihano. Almario. Almonte. Alonte. Alvarez Franz. Alvarez Mercedes. Alvarez Pantalion. Amante. Amatong. Andaya. Angara Castillo. Antonino. Antonio. Aquino Magseisai. Aragonés. Arbison. Arcillas. Arenas. Atsensah. Aumentado. Bagau. Bagaching. Bagilat. Banal. Barbers. Barsaga. Batawil. Batokabe. Bautista Bandigan. Belaro. Belmonte Villisiano. Belmonte Jose Christopher. Belmonte Ricardo. Benitez. Bernos. Bertis. Biazon. Biliones. Birón. Mondok. Bordado. Bravo Anthony. Bravo Meravida. Brosas. Bulut Bigtang. Kagas. Kalalang. Calderon. Kalig Surbiano. Caminero. Campos. Kanama. Kari. Casilau. Castelo. Casa Franz. Casa Fredinil. Katamco. Cayetano. Celeste. Seravika. Siriles. Chaves. Chipeco. Ko. Kuwanko. Juliantes. Cortez. Cortuna. Osalan. Crisologo. Kuwa. Kuoresma. Cueva. Dalipe. Datol. Dasa. Jesus. De Venesia. De Vera. De Pensor. Del Mar. De Lozario. De Los Montalia. De Moporo Dula. De Moporo Khalid. Duabit. Durano. Di. Elago. Enverga. Erise. Regel. Hermita Buain. Escudero. Espina. Espino. Estrelia. Isébio. Evardone. Fariñas. Fernando. Ferrer Juliet. Ferrer Luis. Feriol. Floirendo. Flores. Fortun. Fortuno. Fentebelia. Garbin. García Gwendolin. García Uc. García Albano. Gari Richard. Gari Sharon. Gassetaya. Gachalian. Heron. Guana Cristina. Go Mark. Gómez. Gonzaga. González Alexandria. González Aurelio Dong. González Fernando. Gorseta. Gulyas. Hernández. Herrera Di. Pofor. Halosos. Javier. Ko. Konghun. Labad Labad. Lakson. Lagman. Lanete. Logan. Lasatin. Lia Chon. Li. Limkay Chong. Lobrigat. López Benur. López Carlo. López Manuel. Loyola. Makapagalaroyo. Maceda. Madrona. Malapitan. Manalo. Mengawang. Mangudatus Huarto. Mangudatus Ajit. Mercoleta. Marcos. Merinho. Marquez. Martínez. Matugas. Miliana. Mendín. Mendoza. Mercado. Mirsol. Montoro. Nava. Nieto. Noel. Nogralis Jerico. Nogralis Carlo. Nolasco. Núñez Maleñaon. Waminal. Okampo. Olivares. Ong Edwin. Ong Henry. Ortega Pablo. Ortega Vini. Paciáu. Paduano. Palma. Pancho. Panganiban. Panotes. Papandayan. Pichay. Pimentel. Pineda. Plaza. Primicia Segabás. Kimbo. Radasa. Ramiresato. Ramos. Relampagos. Rivilla. Robapuno. Robes. Rocamora. Rodríguez Isidro. Rodríguez Maximo. Roman. Romero. Romualdes. Romualdo. Roque. Sactalan. Sagarbaria. Sahali. Salceda. Salimbangon. Salo. Salon. Sambar. Sangkapan. Sandoval. Santos Repto. Sarmiento Cesar. Sarmiento Edgar. Sabiliano. Semah. Xiao. Silverio. Singson. Suansige Strilita. Suansigoracio. Suárez. Sielbarado. Tambunting. Tan Angelina. Tan Milagrosa. Tan Sherni. Tejada. Teves. Chanco. Ting. Tiño. Tolentino. Trenyas. Tugna. Tupas. Ti. Umalí. Unavia. Ungab. Uniko. Uy Juliet. Uy Rolando. Uy Bretta. Vargas. Vargas Alfonso. Villarde. Vilasco. Vilasco Ketera. Veloso. Vergara. Villa Fuerte. Villa Meba. Villa Rasa Suárez. Villa Rica. Villa Rin. Ylago. Yap Arthur. Yap Milexo. Yap Victor. Yu. Semor Marcamin. Semor Ronaldo. Sarate. Subiri.
Madam Speaker, the roll call shows that 199 members responded to the call.
With 199 members responding to the call, the Chair declares a cordon. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for the Department of the approval of the Journal of the previous session.
Any objections? Hearing none, motion is approved. Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we now proceed with the reference of business and request that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as communications and committee reports. I sumo, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objections? The Chair hears none. The Secretary General is directed to read the title of the bills and resolutions on first reading as well as the communications and committee reports for referral to the appropriate committees.
Reference of Business, Bills on First Reading. House Bill 6979, converting the Gimara's LTO Extension Office into a regular LTO DSC Office, Representative Nava.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6980, providing representation of senior citizens in the different LTOs, Representative Datol.
Committee on Local Government.
House Bill 6981, setting the age and health qualifications for Chairman and Commissioners of the CHED, Representative Romero.
Committee on Higher and Technical Education.
House Bill 6982, establishing resource centers for indigenous cultural communities, indigenous peoples, Representative Bernos.
Committee on Indigenous Cultural Communities and Indigenous People.
House Bill 6983, strengthening the role of the Games and Amusement Board, Representative Bernos.
Committee on Games and Amusement.
House Bill 6984, institutionalizing the automatic rehabilitation of arrested apprehended persons, Representative Bernos.
Committee on Dangerous Drugs.
House Bill 6985, amending Article 2206 of Republic Act Number 386, Representative Bernos.
Committee on Revision of Laws.
House Bill 6986, providing a standard of care for the treatment of persons with bleeding disorders, Representative Herrera Di.
Committee on Health.
House Bill 6987, reclassifying the mangabul reservation and bayambang pangasinan into alienable and disposable uldan, Representative Arenas.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 6988, regulating medical education, licensure, residency, and practice in the Philippines, Representative Tan Angelina.
Committee on Civil Service and Professional Regulation.
House Bill 6989, granting hazard pay to all public prosecutors, Representative Gonzaga.
Committee on Appropriations.
House Bill 6990, establishing the Quezon Protected Landscape, Representative Tan Angelina.
Committee on Natural Resources.
House Bill 6991, mandating a class on agriculture and fisheries in public elementary schools, Representative Subiri.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6992, providing farm magnakarto for the cultural development workers, Representative Panganiban.
Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 6993, establishing the Isabela Coastal Special Economic Zone, Representative Panganiban.
Committee on Economic Affairs and the Committee on Trade and Industry.
House Bill 6994, instituting the mandatory drug testing for application renewal of driver's license, Representative Merinho.
Committee on Transportation.
House Bill 6996, providing magnakarto for workers in the energy sector, Representative Arenas.
Committee on Energy.
House Bill 6997, providing for rural development amelioration fund, Representative Ramos.
Committee on Rural Development.
House Bill 6998, renaming the Tawan Tawan Elementary School, Representative Ungam.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 6999, converting the Leginbanua East Elementary School, Representative Marquez.
Committee on Basic Education and Culture.
House Bill 7000, recognizing the Boy Scouts of the Philippines as an independent voluntary autonomous non-governmental organization, Representative Relampagos.
Committee on Government Enterprises and Privatization.
House Bill 7001, delimiting the extent of alienable and disposal lands, Representatives Alvarez, Abueg, and Acosta.
Committees on Natural Resources.
House Bill 7002, upholding the sanctity of family life, Representative Castelo.
Committee on Population and Family Relations.
House Bill 7003, dividing barangay Adams and the municipality of Adams, province of Pilipinas Norte into two distinct and independent barangays, Representative Fariñas.
Committee on Local Government.
Resolutions. House Solution 1595, commanding Filipino scientist Apollo Arquesa PhD, Representative Belaro.
Committee on Science and Technology.
House Solution 1596, commanding Hillary Andales, Representative Belaro.
Committee on Science and Technology.
House Solution 1597, directing Committee on Labor and Employment to inquire on the death of 38 workers in the NCCC mall, Representatives Jesus, Bros, and several others.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1598, expressing profound sense of loss for the passing of Philippine fashion icon Jose Pitoi Moreno, Representative Castelo.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1599, urging the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability to investigate the alleged misuse of funds of the PCSO, Representative Sarate, Tiño, several others.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1600, direct appropriate House committees to conduct a probe into the reported increase in bank fraud involving BDO Unibank, Representative Bertis.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1601, calling for investigation by appropriate committee on the territorial limitation of local government construction contracts, Representative Suárez.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1604, earnestly urging the DBM to abide the proper implementation of Republic Act 7171 and RA 8240, Representative Sabiliano, Ortega, De Venesia, several others.
The Committee on Appropriations.
House Solution 1605, commanding Mr. Antonio Tonito Payumo, Representative Belaro.
Committee on Youth and Sports Development.
Committee Report, Report Number 576 on House Bill Number 7005.
Committee on Rules.
Report Number 577 on House Bill Number 7007.
Committee on Rules.
Additional Reference of Business and Resolution. Resolution. House Solution 1606, expressing profound condolences of the House on the demise of Mr. expressing profound condolences of the House on the demise of Mr. Oscar R. Sarmiento, father of Samar, Representative Edgar Mary Sarmiento, and former Samar representative and former secretary of the Department of the Interior and Local Government, Melcena Sarmiento, Representative Sarmiento Cesar.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1607.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1608, urging the Committee on Good Government and Public Accountability to conduct an investigation on the alleged anomalies behind the slow passport processing of the Department of Foreign Affairs, Representative Sarate.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1609, calling for an investigation on this new system for pre-employment medical examination, Representative Arenas.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1610, direct the appropriate committee into the status implementation of Continuing Professional Development Act of 2016, Representatives Bertis, Botokabe, Bravo, and De Vera.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1611, calling for Congress to the Committee on Transportation to conduct an investigation on legislation and the sufficiency of Philippine maritime safety standards, Representative Manalo.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1612, strongly urging President Rodrigo Arduerte to provide both houses of Congress a full disclosure of the loan conditions for all projects under the bill, Representative Aliano.
Committee on Public Works and Highways.
House Solution 1613, direct the appropriate committee to conduct an inquiry on the current capacity of the cybersecurity workforce of the Department of Information Communications Technology, Representative Baliano.
Committee on Rules.
House Solution 1614, expressing the profound condolences of the House to the family of engineer Oscar R. Sarmiento, father of Edgar Mary Sarmiento, Representative the First District of Samar, and Melcena Sarmiento, former member of the House of Representatives, Representatives Alvarez, Fariñas, and Suarez.
Committee on Rules.
Committee Report, Report Number 578 on House Resolution Number 1522.
Committee on Rules. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, under the calendar of business for the day, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6649 as contained in Committee Report Number 477 submitted by the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs. I therefore request that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill.
Any objections? Hearing none, the Secretary General is so instructed.
House Bill Number 6649, an act strengthening further the pre-departure orientation program for overseas Filipino workers to include financial entrepreneurial education, amending for the purpose of Public Act Number 8042 as amended, otherwise known as the Migrant Workers and Overseas Filipinos Act of 1995.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Overseas Workers Affairs, the Honorable Jose Lito Manalo, be recognized to begin his sponsorship of the measure. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Chairperson, the Honorable Manalo is hereby recognized. Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider his explanatory note as be adapted as the sponsorship speech. So move, Madam Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, his explanatory note is considered as the sponsorship speech.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I open to, I move to terminate the period of interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period of interpolation is terminated.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objections? Hearing none, the period of amendment is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, there being no member that wishes to make amendments, I therefore move that we close the period of amendments. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period of amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 6649, as contained in Committee Report Number 477. So move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill 6649. All those in favor, please say a. All those against, please say nay. The a's clearly have it. House Bill Number 6649 is hereby approved on second reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6306 as contained in Committee Report Number 503 and instruct the Secretary General to read the bill. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the Secretary General is hereby instructed to read the title of the bill.
House Bill Number 6306, an act recognizing the British School Manila as an educational institution of international character, granting certain prerogatives conducive to its development as such.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Basic Education and Culture, Representative Red Durano be recognized to sponsor the measure.
The Chairperson, the Honorable Durano is hereby recognized to deliver his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I ask that my, that the explanatory note of the said measure be used as my sponsorship speech.
Any objections? Hearing none, the explanatory note of the Honorable Red Durano is hereby used as the sponsorship speech. Please proceed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period of interpolation is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to make interpolations, I move that we close the period of interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period of interpolation is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period of amendment is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt the committee amendment as contained in the committee report. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the committee amendments as contained in the committee report is hereby adopted.
Madam Speaker, may, I move that we open the period of individual amendments and I move that we recognize the Honorable Ron Salo for his individual amendment. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period for individual amendment is hereby opened. The Honorable Ron Salo is hereby recognized.
Thank you very, thank you very much, Madam Speaker. May I inquire if the Honorable Chairman would be willing to accept some individual amendments?
May we first hear the amendment, Madam Chairman?
Sir Chair, Madam Speaker respectfully move to amend Section 4 of the bill to propose, respectfully propose, Madam Speaker, to remove the phrase "notwithstanding recognition of prerogatives under this act." As such, Section 4 shall read as follows. "Section 4, Supervision and Regulation of the Department of Education. The British School Manila shall be under the Supervision and Regulation of the Department of Education and shall adhere to basic laws and rules and regulations of Department of Education governing international or foreign schools." So move, Madam Speaker.
The committee doesn't object to amendment, Madam Speaker.
There being no objections from the Chair. Majority Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we accept the amendment as proposed. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the amendment is carried.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
That's all?
Yes, Madam Speaker.
Okay, thank you, Honorable Ron Salo. Yes, Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we, that we close the individual amendments. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period of amendments is closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we vote on second reading, House Bill Number 6306 as contained in Committee Report Number 503. So move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 6306 on second reading. All those in favor, say a. All those against, say nay. The a's have it. House Bill Number 6306 is appro, as amended, is approved on second reading. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6710 as contained in Committee Report Number 490 and therefore request that the Secretary General be instructed to read the title of the bill. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objections? Hearing none, the Secretary General is hereby instructed to read the title of House Bill Number 6710.
House Bill 6710, an act providing for additional prohibitions to increasing penalties for violations of Republic Act Number 8484, otherwise known as the Access Devices Regulation Act of 1998.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Banks and Financial Intermediaries, Representative Ben Everdone, be recognized to begin his sponsorship.
The Honorable Everdone, the Honorable Everdone is hereby recognized to deliver his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Honorable Speaker, the same colleagues, an impending crisis is at hand that must be addressed swiftly and decisively to prevent an erosion of the confidence in our banking system that could hamper our country's economic expansion. Or, Madam Speaker, with the pleasure of the body, I would just like to have this piece be entered into the records.
Are there any objections? Hearing none. The explanatory note of the sponsor is hereby considered read into the record as his sponsorship speech.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period of interpolation is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, there being no member who wishes to interpolate, I, I move that we close the period of interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period of interpolation is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of amendments. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period of amendments is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, there being no member, no committee who wishes to, no committee amendments, I therefore move that we open the period of individual amendments. So move, Madam Speaker.
There being no objections, the period for individual amendment is hereby opened.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Jose Enrique Garcia for his individual amendments. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable, the Honorable Garcia is hereby recognized to propose his amendments.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I'd like to propose the following amendments and I'd like to ask if the sponsor is open to amendments.
With pleasure, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, on page 5, line 19, insert a new section 5 to read as follows. "A cardholder who abandons or surreptuously leaves the place of employment, business or residence stated in his application or credit card without informing the credit card company of the place where he could actually be found. If at the time of such abandonment or surreptuous leaving, the outstanding and unpaid balance is past due for at least 90 days and is more than 200,000 pesos, shall be prima facie presumed to have used his credit card with intent to defraud." Second, on page 5 after section 5, insert another new section to read as follows. Section 6, Section 16 of RA 8484 is hereby amended to read as... So Madam Speaker, the first amendment is the one on page 5, line 19, inserting what I read in the new section 5.
Thank you. What does the sponsor say?
We accept, Madam Speaker, the proposed amendment.
Thank you. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move to accept the individual amendment as proposed. So move, Madam Speaker.
Are there any objections? Hearing none, the amendment as proposed by the Honorable Garcia is hereby carried. Please proceed, Honorable Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On page 5 after section 5, insert another new section to read as follows. Section 6, Section 16 of RA 8484 is hereby amended to read as follows. "Section 16, Reporting Requirements. All companies engaged in the business of issuing access devices, including banks, financing companies, and other financial institutions issuing access devices as well as all partner merchants, shall conduct initial investigation on any reported access device fraud and furnish real-time reports on the result thereof to the National Bureau of Investigation and the Anti-Cybercrime Group of the Philippine National Police. The report shall contain a narration about the fraud committed and an identification of the perpetrator if feasible. The report shall further constitute the complaint necessary for the NBI or the Anti-Cybercrime Group of the PNP to pursue further investigation and prosecution of the fraud. Notwithstanding this requirement, banks, financing companies, and other financial institutions, including their subsidiaries and affiliates, issuing access devices shall continue to be regulated and supervised by the Banco Central na Pilipinas while other companies issuing access devices shall continue to be regulated and supervised by the Securities and Exchange Commission. The NBI and the Anti-Cybercrime Group of the PNP may compel access device issuers and partner merchants to cooperate and assist in investigations on access device frauds as well as the submission of additional data as needed on a case-to-case basis. Failure to comply with the orders from law enforcement authorities shall be punished as a violation of Presidential Decree 1829 with imprisonment of prison correctional in its maximum period or a fine of 100,000 pesos or both for each and every noncompliance with an order issued by law enforcement authorities."
What does the speaker, what does the sponsor say?
The committee, Madam Speaker, accepts the amendment.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the individual amendment as proposed. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the amendment as proposed is hereby approved. May proceed.
Lastly, Madam Speaker, the succeeding sections of the bill are renumbered accordingly.
That is an administrative matter, so if that is okay with the sponsor, Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve the individual amendments proposed.
Any objections? It's just a renumbering. Any objections? Hearing none. The renumbering is hereby noted. I believe there are no other...
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Amendments.
With that, Madam Speaker, I move that we close the period of individual amendments. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the period of individual amendments is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, Madam Speaker, I move that we approve on second reading as amended, House Bill Number 6710 under Committee Report 490. So move, Madam Speaker.
There is a motion to approve House Bill Number 6710 on second reading. All those in favor, please say "aye."
Ayes.
All those against, please say "nay." The ayes have it. House Bill Number 6710, as amended, is approved on second reading.
Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that House Bill Number 6973, under Committee Report Number 572, be considered, and I therefore instruct the Secretary General to read the bill. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objections? Hearing none, the Secretary General is directed to read the title of House Bill 6973.
House Bill Number 6973, "An act enhancing the effectiveness of the Metropolitan Manila Council in formulating policies, rules, regulations, and enacting ordinances for Metro Manila, amending for the purpose of Republic Act Number 7924, entitled the not creating the Metropolitan Manila Development Authority, defining its powers and functions, providing funds therefore and for other purposes."
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that the Chairperson of the Committee on Metro Manila Development, the Honorable Winnie Castello, be recognized to begin the sponsorship of the measure. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, the Honorable Winnie Castello, the Chairperson of the said Committee, is hereby recognized to deliver his sponsorship speech.
Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer. To save precious legislative time and to abbreviate the proceedings, Madam Presiding Officer, I move that the explanatory note of this presentation be made as the sponsorship speech of the said bill.
As stated by the sponsor to save precious time, the sponsorship speech of the Honorable Sponsor Winnie Castello is here... the explanatory note is hereby read into the record as his sponsorship speech. Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we open the period of interpolation of the measure. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none. The period of interpolation is hereby open.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the Honorable Gentleman from the Buhay Party List, Honorable Lito Atienza, for his interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Lito Atienza from Buhay Party List is hereby recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. And with the kind indulgence of the gentleman, the Chairman of the MMDA Committee, we would like to ask many questions on his proposed creation of a new MMDA.
Willingly, Your Honor.
Let's go back a bit in history as we go through the judgment of how this experiment, a hybrid form of government, that was given Metro Manila. Sometime in 1975, by virtue of Presidential Decree 824, binuupo itong Metro Manila Commission. Then, it was recreated after Edsa into the Metro Manila Authority. And after that, it became... it turned into the Metro Manila Development Authority. At dun sa tatlong hakbang na yon, ang pakay po ng ating pamahalaan at ng mga namuno ng mga panahong yon, ay babigyan ng epektibong pagpaplano. Pagpaplano ang rehiyon ng Metro Manila para po naman ito'y mabuo at umunlad. Kaya po ito'y tinatawag natin ngayong Metro Manila Development Authority. Ang tanung ko po ay una, nakabuo po ba ng development plan ang Metro Manila Authority? Ang Metro Manila Development Authority? Sa panahon ngayon, meron na po ba silang sinusunod na plano na binoon nila sa pamamagitan itong kapangyarihan ito? Do they have a development plan for Metro Manila, Madam Speaker?
Madam Presiding Officer, with respect to the query and interpretation of the representative from Buhay Party List and a former mayor of Metro Manila, Madam Presiding Officer, through you, may we request also a former mayor of Marikina be recognized to answer the interpolation of Representative Atienza, Congressman Marikina Representative Bayani BF Fernando.
There being no objections, the Honorable Bayani Fernando is recognized to respond to the question.
Thank you, Congressman Castello. Madam Speaker, Metro Manila has a complete development plan. And Metro Manila, the MMDA, is a department headed by an assistant director handling this planning for Metro Manila. We do have. And as a matter of fact, we even have a complete study, a complete plan, how to handle the number-one problem of Metro Manila, the 550,000 squatter families in Metro Manila. We do have such plans, complete plans. And when I left the office, it was there, and it's for you. Anybody can have a look at it.
Madam Speaker, I'd like to direct the question now to the gentleman standing up to explain his measure. Kung meron po silang development plan, yun po ba development plan di Bayani Fernando? Or development plan ng Metro Manila Development Authority?
Yun po institutionalized. Yan ay development plan of the Metro Manila Development Authority, prepared by and approved by the council, by the Metro Manila Council.
Yan po simula ng problema. Merong planong binoon ang kagalang-galang na Congressista Fernando, subalit hindi po naisama sa institusyon ng Metro Manila Governance. It became a program of Chairman Fernando that during his time, he was probably following. But after him, kung tatanungin ko po siya ngayon, sinusunod ba 'yung plano ninyo?
Yan ang pinakamalaking problema, Mr. Speaker. How to institutionalize things? How can they survive with the exigencies of politics? And so does the very essence of this proposed bill, to how it can help to institutionalize things. And if I may be allowed to read, to fully explain, this... supposed to make this an opening statement. Anyway, twenty-four years since the MMDA was created, we had yet to see a single ticketing system for Metro Manila. We would have seen by now much-disciplined roadway users in Metro Manila if we had this twenty-four years ago. This is just one among the many things we need to solve, the traffic crisis we are into now. Task to put this up is MMDA, as especially mentioned in the MMDA law. Now we have seventeen LGUs in Metro Manila, and each has its own unique ticketing system, and one of MMDA's single ticketing system. In the ensuing confusion, the people learned to live with it, to live with it and suffer. The MMDA single ticketing system has been there complete for adoption a decade before this time, which would have given our motorists by now no quarters to abuse. I am to blame. I could not find any means to find a solution to the question of autonomy, which has bugged Congress in the inception, in the very inception of the MMDA law. All I had then is a wishful thought of a mechanism that we may now find in the spirit of this proposed amendment. Authored by thirty of the thirty-one congressmen of Metro Manila and the concurrence of the local government representative, members of the technical working group who worked on it, for the purpose and the unanimous approval of the Committee of Metro Manila Concerns and its Chair Congressman Castello, we now present this to this big chamber with high hopes of eliciting the brilliant collective thoughts of all our colleagues.
Madam Speaker, is the gentleman delivering a sponsorship speech? Or is he responding to my question? I will sit down first if he's delivering a sponsorship speech.
I think he mentioned that it is a part of the speech which was in response to his owner's question, so...
I have one question.
Then let's ask the Honorable Bayani Fernando to finish.
If you allow this, Madam Chairman, I would like to request the Chair to deduct the time he is consuming, he has already consumed six minutes, to my time, because otherwise, baka mapayahin din na po ako makapagtanong dahil sa sabi ninyo, mahaba na masyado ito. I'm willing to listen to him, but let us not consider that as part of the interpolation of this presentation.
That's...
Because I have one question, I want an answer, not a lecture on the concept of the gentleman.
So I think that's noted. Let's proceed.
I think I have answered your question, Mr. Speaker. Well, anyway, if I had not done so, will you please repeat the question?
Nakalimutan po niya't ninyo. Kaya malayo na po usapan eh. Ang tanung ko po ay, 'yung kanyang sinasabing plano na binoon niya, ay naging matagumpay po ba, tinutupad po ba ngayon ng MMDA? O nakalimutan na sa kasaysayan ng ating Metro Manila experience or experiment?
Precisely, Mr. Speaker, that's the essence, that's the spirit of this law that we're considering.
So you are admitting that the initiator...
Because as from the very start, when the bill creating Metro Manila was discussed in this chamber, the framers had a big problem on how to pierce the veil of autonomy of the local governments so that they can create a more effective Metro Manila Development Authority. But all that they were able to do was to give the Chairman of the MMDA a cabinet seat and place this agency under the Office of the President. Precisely, Mr. Chairman, the policymaking body according to the MMDA law is the Metro Manila Council. But in my experience, in my eight years with the agency, we could not do much in having ordinances that would actually make more effective, more effective enforcement of policies and rules and regulations. Because everything is put to question in the courts. That's why this bill would solve that problem.
Again, Madam Chair, I'm reiterating my question. Is his plan being implemented or not? I need an answer before I proceed. Otherwise, he's deviating from other topics, which I will also intend to question later on. But he is answering already before I even ask the question. Ang tanung ko lang po, 'yung po bang plano ninyo na sinasabi niyang nabuo ninyo? Ay sinusunod o hindi?
I'm sorry. Okay. Hindi po nasusunod lahat?
Hindi po nasusunod.
Ah, hindi po lahat?
Dahil na sinabi niyang nasusunod, di kayo pa lang may kasalanan nitong kapalpan ngayon.
Abo po ay ano, kabahagi ng kapalpan na yan, kung meron man.
Hindi nasusunod. Alam mo nyo kung bakit din nasusunod? Siguro aaminin ninyo. Sapagkat 'yung ginagawa ng MMDA before and now in another direction today, ay lihis sa ating saligang batas. The Metro Manila experiment is an experiment. It is not contained in our Constitution because the Constitution respects local autonomy. Kaya 'yung kanilang mga eksperimentong ginawa, dinala sa Cortez Suprema, talo sila. Hindi po ba natalo kayo? Sapagat sabi ng Cortez Suprema, hindi kayo pwedeng gumawa ng ordinasa. Sapagkat ang ordinasa ay local government function. Malinaw po yun dahil dinaanan natin pare-pareho yun. 'Yung po ba sinasangayunan nyo o hindi?
'Yung pong sinasabi ninyo ay bahagi ng batas na ginawa ng Kongresong ito.
Ang sinasabi nyo ngayon, gumagawa kayo ng batas to overrule, override local autonomy as a principle, enshrined in the Constitution? 'Yung po ba sinasabi ninyo, this law will now override the impact and effect of local autonomy as a principle of governance?
Actually, it will thus make it more effective. But actually, in the MMDA law, the Metro Manila Council, the MMDA, has that authority to make ordinances. But somehow, in the course of this court these lawsuits and all these questions, they have missed the point that the MMDA has the authority. It can make... not the MMDA, the Metro Manila Council can make ordinances, but restricted to the functions, to the mandates of the MMDA. Restricted to the specific mandates of the MMDA, but not totally without that power to legislate.
Honorable Speaker, I can see the passion of the gentleman in sponsoring this bill because he would like to see an effective regional government in Metro Manila. I share that with him. Kami po nagtrabaho makasama at one point in time in our history. But that passionate sentiment has to be in consonance with the intention of the Constitution. And we cannot pass a law today giving the Metro Manila Government Unit more powers, but precisely the Supreme Court questioned them. Daan-daan kayo. Hindi kayo pwedeng gumawa ng batas for Metro Manila. You will have to consult the mayors, and the mayors will have to work with the sanggunian bayan, hindi po ba yun ang Supreme Court decision? And each local government unit will have to pass an ordinance because sila ang tunay na gobyerno, at kayo naman ay eksperimento lang. You are a special body that cannot be over and above local government units which are directly elected by the people. Eh ito tayo ngayon, nagugustoh tayo para bigyan ang masigit na kapangyarihan. Pero hindi po natin pwedeng tawirin 'yung provision of the Constitution. Kaya, binabasa ko po ito from page one up to the last page. It's full of inconsistencies because they would want to comply with the constitutional mandate of giving the local government units the power, but at the same time, they want to use all that same power by repeating in many instances of this proposed bill that the MMDA will now set the policies, laws, and even collect taxes, impose taxes on Metro Manila, which they cannot do. That will be taxation without representation, which is another violation of the Constitution. Kaya ako po ay naniniwala sa kanya, hinahangaan ko siya, pero ito pong batas na ito ay hindi makatutulong bagkos. Makapagpapagunulaloo ng buhay nating lahat with regards to the basic services which they should really be planning. Ang MMDA po ay development planner, hindi po local government unit yan. Ang local government units po sa Manila, merong mayor, may mga concejal, may vice mayor, na hindi pwedeng saklawan ng isang appointed official. Kaya kung gusto po natin talagang ayusin ang mga problema natin sa Metro Manila, ayusin natin 'yung internet connection, ayusin natin ang bahay. Ayusin natin ang lahat ng mga serbisong nagpapahirap sa ating buhay. Eh hindi po itong solusyon. 'Yun lang po naman pinupun ako. The solution is disjointed to the problem. They want to give the Metro Manila government, appointed by the President, more powers than what the constitution directly provides. I will join him in any effort to really solve the problem, but not to create a bigger one. Dahil po, da't tayo mananagot later on. Sino na naman ang mga gumawa niyang mga batas na 'yan? I would want to say, hindi po ako 'yan. 'Yung mga nakapirmapuro, sila po may gawa. Ang tanong ko pong susunod. Do you plan to impose new taxes on Metro Manilaans?
Hindi po. Wala pong anong karapatang mag-anu ng taxes ang MMDA. Ever, not ever. It's not in the MMDA law beyond the authority of the agency.
Eto po eh. Under your proposed new section or portion of the section, section four, which is section six in this act, you are giving the power, the mandate of the MMDA to prescribe and collect service and regulatory fees. Eh wala po kayo ng power na 'yun eh.
No, regulatory fees.
Sapagkat hindi kayo halal. Sabi nga ng maraming mga Manila. Sila, tayo ay halal. Sila ay hangal. Because you are usurping functions which are not in accordance with the law. Eto na naman, inulit na naman ninyo. Do you think if this is passed, nobody will question it in the Supreme Court? This is a decided issue, Madam Speaker. The MMDA cannot collect taxes nor impose taxes on the people. You'll have to pass through the local Sanggunean.
Regulatory fees, wala pong taxes. Well anyway.
Hindi po ba regulatory fee, hindi taxes? Hindi po ba pera 'yun? Unless you're talking about Bitcoin. Imaginary. When you pass a regulatory fee and collect from the people, you are taxing the people. That's as clear as they like.
No, it's.
But you don't have that power. How, where will you derive the authority that you envisioned in this proposed law?
Actually, to make things clear, the intent of the bill is actually to reduce the power of the MMC. Will reduce the power of the MMC. Ang magkakaroon ng poder ay ang mga local government units. Ang local government Sangguneans. Will have now, they will approve resolutions, ordinances proposed by the Metro Manila Council. And it's now the seventeen local government councils who will decide, who will approve these things. So that we will now be questioned on autonomy. There will be no fear. The local governments will not feel that their local autonomy will be violated. It's their local government council who will now approve. The Metro Manila Council will put up any question to the staff work and all these things with due consultation and everything. They will prepare the draft of the bill or regulation and then it will be presented to the seventeen local government council. But this time, because we have seventeen mayors in Metro Manila and about two hundred eighty-seven councillors. It's almost the size of this chamber, of the Congress of the Philippines. So we cannot afford like what? We never had a common ordinance for Metro Manila. Because there are too many players in this. Now with this, the proposal of the Metro Manila Council having been studied and approved by technical working groups if there be necessary, will be presented to the council and they will vote on the proposal. But this time, a vote of a yes or no without an amendment. And the majority vote will determine, will decide. Will be, if it becomes, if it's approved with the majority of the local government councils, then the MMC will do nothing but to promulgate the regulation or the ordinance. Wala pong ano, wala pong kinukunin.
Sa makatwid.
You're not going to usurp any power of any local government unit. As a matter of fact, it will now give the councillors of every city in this, to determine the fate of the thirteen million Metro Manilaans. They will now be, not only be deciding on their cities, but they will now be deciding for the whole metropolis. 'Yan po ang ano, ang espíritu ng bill na ito.
Sa aking pakikinig, Madam Speaker, tinatanggap ng ating kagalang-galang Congressista Fernando na itong batas na ito ay kinakailangan ding sangayunan ng lahat ng local government units. 'Yung Metro Manila Council kailangan isang batas ng lahat ng mga Sanggunean. Tama po ba 'yung pagkakadining ko sa inyo? Hindi yata narinig. I would suggest that delay the interfering without interrogation stand.
May I recognize, Madam Presiding Officer, to augment the answer of Chairman Bayani Fernando?
The Honorable Winnie Castillo is hereby recognized.
Yes, I would like to allay the fears of the representative from Buhay Partilis on his fear that the proposed bill would usurp the power of the local government units. No sir, nothing in the bill would allow that to happen. In fact, a provision, no? A provision is stated that all resolutions adopted by the Metro Manila Council will be returned to the Sanggunean. And the Sanggunean will be voting over the proposed bill that was adopted by the Metro Manila Council. So at no part in the proposed bill would there be any intention for the Sanggunean, for the Metro Manila Development Authority to overlap and usurp the function of the LGUs. So the local autonomy will be respected here. There is no violation of the constitution here. We will just change the procedural because history would show that there is no proposals from the Metro Manila Council when they convene. When you say Metro Manila Council, Madam Presiding Officer, this would refer to the Metro Manila mayors. 'Yung pong proposal ng no-smoking ban. 'Yung pong proposal po ng unified ticketing system. It has not yet been realized and put into fruition because there is no LGUs respecting all the resolution adopted by all the Metro Manila councils. So lahat po ng mga naaproba sa Metro Manila Council will be returned back to the different Sangguneans. There are seventeen cities and municipalities who would table it in their agenda, in their Sanggunean, and vote upon it. So we respect the concern of the representative from Buhay Partilis and I assure him that the local autonomy will still be respected and there would be no reservation of functions of the Sanggunean here.
We thank the clarification of the Chairman himself. Are we to understand that he is also accepting our issue with the basic differences of our appreciation? That you cannot deviate from the powers of the local government unit as defined by the constitution?
We accept that, Madam Presiding Officer.
'Yung pong 'yung pinaniliwanag at tinatanggap.
In fact, during the deliberation, we incorporate that position, there is already a jurisprudence in the Supreme Court. I think in Bel Air versus MMDA. Now we took that into consideration. That is why we are very concerned about it. We emphasize that the Sanggunean resolutions or ordinances will not be sidestepped and put it in the back burner. We will be respecting them. The only amendment here is procedural, Madam Presiding Officer. So lahat po ng mga naaprobahan po ng Metro Manila Council will be referred to the Sanggunean po for voter, for deliberation, for public consultation and public hearing.
For the information.
They will adapt it well and good. Pag hindi po inaadap po 'yan, we will be respecting it.
For the information of the body, respected colleagues, 'yung sinasabi nila ngayon, na intensyon itong panukalang ito, ayun na po ang kanilang ginagawa sa nakaraan. So walang pagbabago, ang sinasabi nila, walang pagbabago. Ganun din na susundin. Metro Manila Council is supreme. Lahat ng kanilang desisyon, padadaanin sa local government unit individually. Pareho po ang sistema, tama po ba 'yun?
Ah, this would be different, Madam Presiding Officer, because in the past, whatever is approved in the Metro Manila Council, eh hindi po automatic. It is not mandated that the Sanggunean will act on it. But in the proposed law, that we are now asking this body to have it approved, it would now be a requirement that the Sanggunean will take action of whatever product of the Metro Manila Council will be having.
Are you saying?
For example, there is the no-smoking ban, there is the unified ticketing system, there is the comprehensive and holistic traffic code that each of individual cities and municipalities are implementing differently. There is a propose that it would be unified. However, because of, in the absence of that law, kanya-kanya po mga traffic ang Macti, ang Manila, ang Tagig, ang Quezon City. So if a commuter or a passenger of vehicle would traverse different cities, iba-iba po, ang mga reglamentos at susundin. Pero with this proposed bill, it is, it would now mandate that lahat po ng Metro Manila Council resolutions and ordinances that was approved will be taken up by the different Sanggunean. Hopefully, it will be approved. Pag hindi, we will be respecting the autonomy of the Sanggunean in that particular local legislature, Madam Presiding Officer.
Madam Speaker, the gentleman keeps on mentioning the success of the no-smoking ban. I'd like to put on record, hindi po dahil sa MMDA 'yan. 'Yan po ay dahil sa executive order ang ating pangulo na nagbigay ng paraan 'yung dating batas na binuo ng dating kongreso ay ngayon ay patupad ng gobyerno. That is the main reason why people now are following the law. Not because of a Metro Manila edict or proclamation, but the President himself said, "I will not allow." Under this executive order, which is in implementation of an existing law of the land, that smoking will not be allowed in public now. Hindi po MMDA 'yan. So I'd like to clarify that. The success of the no-smoking ban is not an MMDA success. In fact, the MMDA has not fulfilled its mandate. This law is a ten-year-old law. Hindi po pinatutupad 'to. Dakit? Dahil hindi nila nakikita po 'yan. Nakita ng Pangulon Duterte, pinagbawal, sumusunod ngayon. Hindi lang dito sa Metro Manila, sa buong bansa. Again, I will overstress the fact that Metro Manila should be given a development plan, bible of development, which all mayors should read, memorize, and follow. But definitely, putting bureaucracy with more powers now will solve the problem. Traffic will be worse if we follow this proposed law. Lalong madidiffus po ang responsibility. Sino po talaga ang may cargo ng traffic management? Sabi nila, sila. Eh 'yun po, ginigid nila numpay. So I would like to ask the gentleman now. He's from Metro Manila, he's a noted leader of Quezon City. Is the traffic condition today better than yesterday?
Before, Madam Chairman, Madam Presiding Officer, before I would answer the last part of the question, may I, I think the good interpreter misread or misunderstood me. I did not say that the no-smoking ban was effective because an ordinance was created by the Metro Manila Development Authority. It is contrary. The very reason that it is not effective, the very reason that it failed, no, it because, it is because we do not have a unified law sa Metro Manila. And it is, and we are so happy that the President intervened. Had there been a law that would allow the Metro Manila Council as envisioned by this bill, I think the no-smoking ban would be effective. Hindi na po sana kailangan ang office of the President. So it failed because of this. And it is for this reason that we are asking this body to have it approved. So that there will be no intercession from the President anymore. The Metro Manila Council, composing of the Metro Manila mayors, is sufficient, will sufficiently tackle all the issues that is mandated by law that is granted powers by the MMDA like garbage, like problems on traffic, like problems on sanitation and public order. I hope the good gentleman would understand me there. With respect naman po dun po sa last part of his query as to the effectiveness of the traffic situation, we understand it is not. We understand that it is a thankless job. In fact, this representation has been calling and summoning the Metro Manila Development Authority officials and blaming them for the horrendous traffic that we are experiencing right now. But this is not a game that would be finding fault. No, hindi po natin sinisisi ang ating mga sarili huwag dito. What is important is we move forward, we legislate laws that we think is important so that would address the problem of traffic here. And it is our position, the members of the Metro Manila's position right now, is this law that is pending before us would also help contain the traffic situation. Because there are different traffic codes. Iba po ang traffic sa Tagig, iba po ang traffic sa Manila, iba traffic po sa Marikina. So there are streets that traverse different subdivisions, cities and municipalities, iba-iba po. So it is for this reason, Madam Presiding Officer, that would empower the Metro Manila mayors to put up a unified, holistic, comprehensive traffic code that is implementable and uniformly applicable to all the streets of Metro Manila to address this big problem of traffic that we are now experiencing.
Ang tatanungin ko ngayon ay, 'yung mga problema ang inaako nila noon at nakalagay na naman dito. They will take care of not only traffic, garbage problem, flooding problem. Nakalimutan nila ilagay 'yung mga mas importante ring bagay. Peace and order condition. Wala yata dito sa inyong naisip na programa. Pag walang peace and order, walang development at walang gobyerno. At wala rin tayong epekto. Wala rin po 'yung problema ng baha. 'Yung basura. Ang basura po ngayon, pag dumaan kayo sa mga ilan lunso. Naku, nagkalat po sa mga side book, nagkalat po sa lansangan. So where is the MMDA? Alam ko kung nasan sila. Sa ilalim ng puno, nagbabantay na magkakamalin motorista at pagpapakilala MMDA at magdidilehensya. 'Yung po ang nagaganap ngayon sa mga lansangan at 'yung kanilang programa na sinasabi, hindi po naman inaasit aso. I heard the gentleman in the committee and I am hearing it now again, that traffic management is best handled by a centralized traffic management system. Eh 'yung po kanila ginigid. Meron pa silang mga kalyaan avenues. 'Yung po 'yung tinatawag na alternative route. Sabi sa mga taong bayan, motorista, 'diyan kayo dumaan, maluwag dyan para hindi kayo gamit ng gamit ng edsalan. Alam naman 'yung masikit dyan. Subukan po rin 'yun, gusto niyo paguwi natin, sabay tayo. Andaan na natin 'yung tinatawag 'yung kalyaan avenues. Umpisahan po natin 'yung kalyaan avenue po sa between Macti and Manila, Sobel Rojas, which was contracted by the government. We spent hundreds of millions of pesos for that avenue. And you defined it as kalyaan avenue? Hindi po niyo madadaanan ngayon ang maluwag sapagkat ang dami pong. Hindi po niyo madadaanan ngayon maluwag sapagat ang dami pong mga nakatirang informal settler. Meron pong mga double parked junk dealers and their vehicles. Meron pong mga batang naglalaro sa kalye, pag nasagasaan niyo, may problema po kayo roon. Dun po 'yun sa distrito ng San Andres Bukin. At marami pong mga ganyang alternative routes na hindi nagagamit sapagat hindi nga po napapasunod na ng centralized traffic management, 'yung programa na matino at magpapatakbo ng ating mga bihikolo ng maayos. Noon ako po'y bagong-bagong mayor, 1998, meron pong announcement ng Metro Manila Authority noon. Meron silang intelligent traffic light system na itatatag. At gagastos sa nila ng 4.5 billion pesos. At nagbungkal po ng nagbungkal ng mga panulukan, street corners, junctions of streets and avenues. Nasan po 'yung intelligent traffic light system na 'yun ngayon? Wala na po, dahil hindi po dinilibre 'yun. Isa 'yan sa mga dapat-dati imbestigado, sa napunta 'yung 4.5 billion pesos na inilaan for an intelligent traffic light system for Metro Manila. Again, I'd like the MMDA proposals to mention this particular growing problem. Dapat meron po kayong plano, anong gagawin natin sa traffic situation? 'Yung narinig ko nun, hindi naman naghanap, nawala 'yung pera, pero 'yung traffic light hindi po nailagay. Pumapupuna ng aking mga kaibigan, mga kasama, kapwa mga miyembro ng kongreso. Pag pumunta kayo sa ibang bansa, in Singapore, in Hong Kong, 'yung mga panulukan doon, meron automatic sensor. Pag wala ng dumadaan, automatic green light na 'yun, tatakbo naman 'yung kabila. Stop na 'yung kabila dahil wala ng dadaan eh. Dito po sa'kin baliktad. Pag dumadaan kayo sa isang main avenue, pipigili kayo, dito po sa Commonwealth, palabas ng Edsa. Pipigiling tayo diyan ang mahaba, limang minuto. Pag tumatawid kayo ng Agham. Wala na po dumadaan sa Agham, parado pa rin tayo. Tapos go, ang Commonwealth, 32 seconds. Pag hindi ka mabilis-balis na at makatawid, 5 minutes ka na naman maghihintay. Nasaan ang pagmamaneho? Nasaan ang Metro Manila Development Authority? Nasa ilalim ng puno at likod ng poste, naghihintay ng huhulihin. Kaya pag ito binigyan pa natin ang kapangyarihan, ay palagay ko, lalala ang problema ng traffic sa Metro Manila. Ayun po ba may kinalaman diyan sa inyong master plan na isidabmit? Sinabi ba ninyo na mga enforcer dumiskarte? Pagka maraming jeep na dumadaan o bus, bigyan niyo ng paraan 'yan dahil meron tayong daily collection diyan. At pinaguusapan nila ang traffic, Madam Chair. Madam Presiding Officer, dumadaan naman kayo sa Edsa. About six months ago, we heard about the nose-in, nose-out. Sabi nila, wala ng bus na papasok sa terminal na hindi lalabas sa kabila ng lansangan. Tatanungin ko po sila mga sponsor ng ating proposed law. Nasusunod po ba 'yan o 'yan po'y announcement lang sa press release? Is the MMDA enforcing their own direction, their own policy? That they said they will put order in the otherwise chaotic situation of the bus terminals? There are 47 bus terminals along Edsa, from Balintawak up to Pasay. Not one of them has been touched by the MMDA. I'm asking the question. If it cannot be answered, I will give the answer.
Let me-
It's corruption. Why? Because the bus terminals, I'm sure, are making it very, very comfortable for those who are running the traffic management in a centralized manner for their own benefit and not the public. Makukunsuri kayo, kapagka mga bus ay laganap at pinakawalan sa Edsa, may problema tayong lahat pag-uwi. Pag walang bus, and they do that sporadically, para tayong lahat ay malinlang, magaangang biyahe sa Edsa. Pag masan niyo, pag walang bus, magaang. Pag pinakawala ng mga bus, ibig sabihin, meron silang schedule ng pagpapakawala. Meron na naman tayong problema. From here to your residence in Manila, it'll take you an hour and a half or two hours. Because Edsa becoming possible. Pumasok sa alternative route, 'yung tinatawag nilang kalahayan avenue, eh hindi po naman nakakadaan doon sapagat may nakaburol ko minsan sa gitna ng kalye. Eh mabangga mo pa 'yung mauroon, dumalapang problema mo. So, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker, this law proposes to improve life in Metro Manila. But again, I will reiterate, my respected colleagues, it is not new to us who have suffered and are suffering in Metro Manila. If we would want to improve life in Metro Manila, let us clearly follow the intention of the constitution. Let Tagig be managed by the Tagig elected officials there and not Metro Manila usurping the power and authority but not being responsible. In this proposed bill, they will still not be responsible. Ituturo na na Manila, eh hindi letrabao 'yung mayor dun. What am I proposing, Madam Chair? Let's review this bill before we even act on it. Baka ito ay maipasa natin na wala sa takdang panahon na kung saan 'yung lahat ng mga tinatanong ko ngayon ay nasasagot ng malinaw. Eh wag muna nating ipilit ito ngayon. I asked the first question. Did they ever had a written development plan? And Congressman Bayani Fernando said during his time, meron siya. Can you provide us a copy of that? Para po naman magamit nating justification. Bakit hindi kayo gumaya na lang, Chairman Fernando? At lahat tayo ay makihinabang diyan. Dahil hanggang ngayon, wala akong alam na bibiliyan ang development ang Metro Manila. They exist on a day-by-day whimsical decision of the chairman. Sinabi nila once upon a time, lahat sa mga billboard sa Metro Manila, tatanggalin namin. Palakpak naman ako sa sideline, sabi ko, naku, nagising ang gobyerno. Dito lang po, ito lang po ang lunso natin, may mga billboard katulad diyan. Naglalaki ang billboard. Na pag tinignan puno niyo, ano pakinabang ng gobyerno diyan? Minimal. Ano pakinabang ng MMDA diyan? Ay palagay ko, maximum. Sinabi niya, aalisin nila. Hindi po, dumami po eh. This is the only city in Asia where billboards lord it over. Billboards have already been regulated all over Asia. In the Philippines, in Metro Manila, it is an exclusive domain of the Metro Manila government. Marami po, ako tatanungin pa, pero siguro umpisahan na natin sa sinabi ninyo. Meron kayong development plan? Eh bigyan niyo kami ng kopya. And I will make it an official part of my interpolation. And I will provide you with the support if that plan was ever implemented during your time. And maybe the present chairman of the MMDA should learn from it. But otherwise, my own knowledge of the weakness of this system today will be exacerbated. Lalala, kapagka binigyan pa natin na higit na kapangyarihan at hindi natin ginawa pa ang tama. Ito na po ang pagkakataon. Pinaguusapan natin ang Metro Manila, ito po ang sentro ng ating komersyo, ito po ang sentro ng ating gobyerno, ito po ang sentro ng lahat ng mga pinagkakabalahan ng ating pamahalaan. Kailangan ayusin natin mga problema rito. Dahil kung hindi, naiwanan na po tayo ng maraming Metro Manila region. Tokyo has its own metropolitan government with an elected governor. Ang lahat po ng mga mauunlad na bansa na meron oang metropolitan government ay elected governor ang namumuno. Dito lang po sa'kin na nagumpisa sa eksperimento ang ginang ng may kontrol ng kapangyarihan ng mga panahon niyo, 1975. Ginawa si Chairman ng MMC, Metro Manila Commission, nagtagumpay siya. Why? Not because of the system or the experiment, but because she was Mrs. Marcos. Whatever she said, all the mayors did not question at all. And that was the time when there was no local autonomy principle in the constitution. And I congratulate Mrs. Marcos for having done a good job because she was Mrs. Marcos. Po sa'bin sa akin ang mga nagpo-proposito, ang chairman ay magiging si Mrs. Duterte. Ay palagay ko, tatangayin ako dahil makikinabang po tayong lahat diyan. Susunod lahat ng local government official, pag ang naguutos ay may kapangyarihan. The basic defect of governance in Metro Manila is that the layer of leadership is not elected, appointed. Well, those under them, to get elected as a councilor of Tagig, I'm sure, is not a easy task. To get elected as a councilor in Manila is a very difficult vision and ambition. But you are putting them now under the baton and the power and authority of a created commission, which is still a continuing experiment. So it's about time we decide. Give it genuine powers of a regional government, let's elect the governor of Metro Manila, once and for all. Giving him the mandate of the people because he is the duly-elected governor. Or let's limit the existence of the Metro Manila Development Authority to a well-defined planning authority. Dahil 'yung po naman talaga ang vision ito eh. Sila ang magpaplano and local government units ang magpapatupad. Pero hanggang ngayon, wala pong plano maipapakita. At alam ko, si Congressman Bayani was playing it by ear also during his time. He did very well. But how many Bayani Fernandes do we have after him? All the other chairmen did their best. And I have nothing but praises for them because they were working in a situation where they have to work with elected officials where they are appointed. I appeal to my colleagues tonight. Let's consider a genuine solution and not a palliative one which will aggravate the situation. With the kind indulgence of the ones sponsoring it on the floor, I will wait for that promised development plan to prove once and for all once upon a time that in this little world, a plan was made by the Metro Manila people. Otherwise, I will continue my objection and we will bring this issue in any forum, in any public square to explain to the people, this will not work. It will make our lives harder and giving powers to non-elected people who are lording it over. They have not solved the problem. Garbage still with us, flooding is still with us, traffic is worse today than before. Peace and order, telecommunications, transportation, lahat po ng mga basic services na ipinapangako ng metropolitan government, hindi po na ibibigay. At 'yung po naman ay bagay na may solution. Ang solution po diyan, principle of accountability. Hindi po pwede 'yung mga may hawak ng kapangyarihan, walang accountability. The most that he will get is be driven out of office. Hindi po siya halal eh. Sabi nga po ng maraming tao, halal ang namumuno sa mga lunso. Hangal ang namumuno sa Metro Manila government. Gawin na nating halal din para po naman siya talaga ang managot sa bayan. Kung nagtatagumpay, siya ang may credito. Kung hindi po magtagumpay, hindi na mananalo 'yan sa susunod na halala. Rather than giving more powers to the existing structure, we propose that kind of a theory, philosophy, that election is still the best mode of giving the quality public service our people deserve. I know that the gentleman from Marikina is imbued by the same good intention. I know that the chairman of the committee, knowing him as a local official through and through, and he may even be considered to be the next leader of Quezon City. I appeal to him, let's do the right thing so that this measure will go down in history as a creation of Congressman Castillo, Congressman Bayani Fernando, and the rest of this 17th Congress. Ulitin ko po, iinten ko 'yung development plan ang nabanggit ninyo. Salamat po.
Mapapasainyo po 'yan sa lalong madaling panahon. At sa diyan, totoo po ang mga nabanggit ninyo, apakrami pong pagkukulang at maraming pangangailangan ang Metro Manila, ang MMDA. Kung aking po sana, kung hindi ko lamang pinasok tong bill na ito, sa dami ng problema ang alam ko ng Metro Manila, dapat ay isinusug ko dito. Gawan ang bill and lahat ng problema na 'yan. So balit, I do not want to belabor this chamber. So I think this will resolve these issues. The 101 problems of Metro Manila will be resolved by this bill. By people now with the council and with the mayors of Metro Manila and with every Metro Manila. Because this bill will form a new culture, a contemporary culture for this very diverse culture of Metro Manila. And that will be formed and nurtured by law. At 'yan ang gagawin nitong bill na ito. Sana ay makuha ko ang tiwala, aking mga kasamahan. Sa aking karana sana ito, ang aking pinupus na ito. At thank you very much, Mr. Speaker, my former colleague from MMDA for patronizing me and our chairman Castillo. And I assure you, you will have the announcement. And I will even bring, I will ask my former planning officer to sit down with you with all the documents that we may have. Thank you very much.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move for a two-minute suspension.
Session is suspended. Session is resumed.
Madam Speaker, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill Number 6973 under Committee Report Number 572. So move, Madam Speaker.
Is there any objection? Hearing none. Consideration of House Bill Number 6973 is approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we consider House Bill Number 6775 under Committee Report Number 532 and therefore direct the Secretary General to read the title of the bill. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary General is hereby requested to read the title of House Bill Number 6775.
House Bill Number 6775, not creating the Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development, defining its mandate, powers, and functions, and profiting funds therefore.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, the parliamentary status is that the bill is in the period of sponsorship and debate. May we recognize the chairman of the Committee on Government? One of the authors of the bill, the Honorable Ron Salo, to be recognized, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Ron Salo is hereby recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. We're ready to accept interpolations.
Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the gentleman from the party list, Buhay, the representative Jose Atienza Junior for his interpolation. So move, Madam Speaker.
The Honorable Lito Atienza from Buhay Party List is hereby recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Thank you, Majority Floor Leader. I would like to give my support to our supporters. I am not going to interpolate at the same time. Maybe they will ask me here. But if we are going to be honest with the Majority Leader, we will ask to ask the relevant questions on the practicality and the full impact and effect of creating a Department of Human Settlements. With the kind indulgence of the sponsoring member of Congress, Congressman Salo, I will proceed with my interpolation.
We are very willing to accept interpolations, Madam Speaker.
First, I want to ask all of you. What is the benefit of this new layer of bureaucracy that will be controlling many facets of development? Development which is entrusted to the LGUs, especially housing, which is now a major, major concern and priority of all local government units because of the Housing and Urban Development Act, which was passed about two decades ago. And it is now in full effect. And many LGUs are just starting to realize the relevance and the importance of this law, which is now directing development of housing projects all over the country. This is the issue of the Housing and Urban Development Act or is it going to be a change of plan that will provide a balance for the local government level?
Thank you for your questions. Certainly, Madam Speaker, the proposed DH S U D does not actually create a new layer of bureaucracy, Your Honor, but it seeks to simplify and significantly improve the current one. Among the objectives of this particular bill, the proposed measure is to establish an efficient, effective, comprehensive, unintegrated national, local, housing, and urban development program aimed at adequately addressing the basic housing needs and requirements of the Filipino people as well as to rationalize and coordinate the functions and powers of the National Home Markets Finance Corporation, Home Guarantee Corporation, Home Development with a Fund, and National Housing Authority, among others. So basically, Madam Speaker, it seeks to ensure coherence in the housing sector. We respectfully note for a fact that at present, the H U D C C is the policymaking and the H L U R B is the regulatory arm of the government. But there are other agencies within the housing sector that are also doing their own functions. In this particular regard, this particular department that is being created would rationalize and simplify and integrate all these functions of the government relating to housing, Your Honor.
In practical terms, Madam Speaker, is the gentleman saying that the Department of Human Settlements shall control and for the purpose of facilitation, control activities related to housing.
So there will be one, Madam Speaker, will be one department that will oversee and implement all the policies relating to housing, Your Honor.
Do you believe that centralization is the solution to improve the delivery of housing in the country? Is it more superior as a philosophy and theory than decentralized housing to be handled by the local government units? Do you believe that? So this is what I think.
Basically, Your Honor, it's centralization of all national government offices, Your Honor. But of course, under the local government code, still the local government units are empowered to undertake housing programs and activities for their constituents.
Is the gentleman aware and familiar with the Housing and Urban Development Act sponsored by then-Senator Lina, if I'm not mistaken, otherwise called the Lina Law? Do you know about this?
Yes, Your Honor.
Are you familiar with it?
In addition, as I said earlier, Madam Speaker, this particular law, proposed measure, will ensure that the department being created will assist LGUs in strengthening the role and building the capability of provinces, cities, municipalities as primary entities of urban development and management. It will also monitor local government compliance with housing and urban development laws as well as support local government partnerships with communities, Your Honor.
I didn't receive the answer.
So basically, Your Honor, as I said earlier, the primary arm would still be the LGUs, as what you've been saying. But the department will certainly assist all the LGUs in strengthening their capability and their role in order for them to be able to achieve their required objectives of ensuring housing within their constituents.
Do you think this is helping the Human Settlements Department with the local government units?
Yes, Your Honor.
Do you think this is the right system?
Yes, Your Honor.
All the projects of local government units or provincial government are going to be added to the Department of Human Settlements.
Not exactly, Your Honor. Because of the work that you are saying, it's a primary duty of the local government units. This is the department that is supporting them, Your Honor. At the same time, it will help them to be able to undergo the necessary processes as well as doing the security. It will streamline the process as well as the necessary requirements in order for them to undertake that particular project.
If the same function, why are we still adding another layer? If the only thing we can do is housing, is loyalty really the victim? With the national leadership pushing for the enforcement of the Housing and Urban Development Act? Do you think in your neighborhood, there is no way to improve this?
Thank you for your question.
The illegal application of public and private land, that's right. How to address the problem of informal settlers, that's right.
Yes.
Requiring all local officials to have their own local housing board created, that's right. What is the Department of Human Settlements doing?
As I said earlier, Madam Speaker, I see that not all local government units are in the same status as Manila or some other urban areas in the Metro Manila. There are many local government units which have this concern with respect to informal settlers. They have no capability. That's the reason why the department, we are creating this particular department to help them, especially with LGUs.
As a basic question and issue, Madam Speaker, what is more effective in government? Centralization or decentralization? They are proposing a centralization. What we have now is a decentralized function. So there is a basic incongruence. This is the one. It is not enough to say, "We are helping." How do we do if the Human Settlements Department is not helping? How do we do if the local official is not helping? Does he approve the housing project for the informal settlers? Does he approve the housing program because the Department of Human Settlements is helping?
As you said, Madam Speaker, with respect to centralization, decentralization. The decentralization function of LGUs is not allowed. What we are doing here with respect to national government agencies that are already there, existing national government agencies, is to streamline that particular process among those various departments of the national government to not deal with so many departments or agencies or bureaus or offices of the government.
Does the gentleman imply that they will have a say in the Public Works projects and the planning of the nation's development that is now on the shoulders of Dineda and the Department of Public Works? And now we will add a Department of Human Settlements. Do you think?
No. As we are saying here with respect to housing, so there are various housing departments and units and offices of the government at the present. The Department of Housing will be coming from H U D C C and the H L U R B as well as attached agencies now, the different agencies dealing with the housing sector.
Madam Speaker, are we talking about Department of Housing Creation or Department of Human Settlements?
Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development.
You just mentioned Department of Housing. I would like to clarify that. Maybe it's the same thing we were talking about. Department of Human Settlements.
The full name is Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development, Your Honor.
So you are wrong about the Department of Housing.
Yes.
It is not the Department of Housing.
I apologize.
Department of Human Settlements.
I understand.
It seems like Freud slipped. You really want to control the housing. This is creating actually a Department of Housing disguised as a Department of Human Settlements. So therefore, I will still cite the same principle of whether centralization is more effective than decentralization. I will insist that decentralization is better than centralization. If we create another centralized body to control the development of housing and the development of local communities and many other requirements of a decent life in the communities. Then we should move to the settlements. We have to go back to the time that we have agreed to change. The decentralization is our next step. We respect local autonomy. Now we are adding a super body, Department of Human Settlements. It's scary. Maybe you think you are afraid of the officials and it will only happen when they are going to blow up. I think that is not going to happen. Due to the changing conditions, it will return to their thinking. This is it. We are going to go back to our fears. The housing is talking about. And we have the Housing and Urban Development Act. As I said, if you are going to do this, as I was going to do this, there is all the problem and solution. The local government unit should be the victim of all the requirements of the family, especially for the poor. Communities of homeless should be addressed by whom? The national government? No. The local government. And it is not going to be a full swing. We are now creating another body. This is what I am saying. But it is not going to help, especially for the poor.
Yes. Thank you.
There are a lot of things we need to talk about while old times have passed by.
We certainly respect the opinion of the esteemed representative from Buhay Party List. But as I've said a while ago, we are not actually centralizing housing and urban development. What we are doing is to create this particular department in order to strengthen a national agency to lead a harmonized housing and urban development framework as well as to ensure the capability, building the capabilities of LGUs. So basically, it is helping. As I said earlier, not all LGUs have the same capacity. There are some that we know, Metro Manila, for example, may have that capacity and capability to undertake housing programs for your poor constituents. But not all are the same capacity. So basically, this will ensure that those LGUs who lack their capacity and ability will help them in order to ensure that they address their housing needs within their areas as well to strengthen them. And they will have a national framework and to ensure coherence with our policies when it comes to housing.
Madam Speaker, my main observation and my main objection, you can consider it, to this bill, is that it will only create an additional body to make it more difficult for our people to really own their own houses. While we have our production arm now, National Housing Authority, we have Home Guarantee Corporation, we have H I G C, Insurance Corporation, and we have the issue of giving a balance so that LGUs can float bonds, raise funds, give support to the national government so that they have their own housing board. We are not going to cooperate with this. It will take over this decision. So I am anchoring my observation and my objection. Let's first see if the Housing and Urban Development Act will now be ready for setting aside. If we can answer that, if we put our cabinet on hold on this issue, we will do a change of plan. If there is a national government fund, why not give it to the national housing? We will add more socialized housing for the poor. Don't just let them have the condition that their house is a poverty house and it is not going to last. They will give it to the police. And it is not going to be a decent house that can last for a month or a month. We just put our furniture in the right place. There are some houses that can last. Housing is already a matter that is accepted by the LGUs as a primary responsibility to our people. The protection of rights of the urban poor are now in the hands of the local government units and not national agencies who are more insensitive. And I would say the local government unit is more sensitive to the problems, social problems of our poor. So that if we create another level of bureaucracy, the Urban Housing and Urban Development Act will become useless and may be thrown into the archives and this new law will again be created. A new department is created. All of them will be taught, learn, teach the definition of turf. There is no way to add housing for the rest of the term of our well-intentioned president. I hope he vetoes this if it passes Congress. Thank you.
Madam Speaker, thank you very much to our esteemed colleagues for all of what you said. As I said earlier, I repeat, we know and we respect your opinion. But as I said earlier, it is not going to create a new bureaucracy. Actually, as you said, there are a lot of agencies. And we need a department that ensures coherence, integrated, and comprehensive of our housing needs. As you said, it will be a direction, to address all of this and address the issue of housing. 'yung housing concerns po natin sa pag-address po ng lahat pong ito, sa pagpasaponong batas po nito. Uli maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from the Partilist Gabriela, the Honorable Arlene Brosas for her interpretation.
The Honorable Arlene Brosas is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Maari po bang um, sumagot ng ilang mga katanungan ng ating good sponsor kaugnay sa bill na ito?
Karangalan po natin, nasagutin 'yung mga katanungan po ninyo ma'am. Let's, Madam Speaker.
Maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker, maraming salamat, ginoong sponsor. Matagal ng panahon na umaalingas ang problema ng bansa sa kakulangan sa pabahay at matitirhan. May mahigit sa 5.7 million na housing backlog ang bansa. Napatuloy namang lumulobo sa kaliwatkan ng demolisyon na walang matino at maayos na relokasyon. Kung meron man na relokasyon na ibinibigay sa mga maralitang tagalunsod, ito naman ay malayo sa kanilang pinagkakitaan, walang pasilidad para sa kuriente at walang maiinom na tubig. Kaya patuloy din 'yung pagbalik nung mga nadisplace na ito dito sa kalunsuran. Karamihan sa kanila, mas pinipiling manirahan sa tagpitag pingyero, plywood, karton, ilalim ng tulay, riles, estero, taming ilog o kung saan man merong espasyo. O di kaya ay nagre-renta kung ano ang makakayanan nila. May mga tangka na din dati na isulong at isabatas ang pagkakaroon ng isang departamento nahahawak sa pag-aayos ng pabahay at urban development sa bansa. Ngunit, ang mga tangkang ito ay nakabatay sa pagpapalakas ng burokrasya. Public-private partnerships na mas lalong nagdulot ng malawakang demolisyon ng mga nakaraang administrasyon. Malakas ang pagtutol ng mamayan sa mga panukalang batas na tinuguray ang pagprivatisa sa pabahay kagaya ng Department of Housing and Urban Development Act of 2001. Dahil nga ito ay noon pa mang ah, matagal na no, na isinusulong ilang um, ilang kongreso na, na ito ay sinusulong. Ang DIHOD Act of 2001 ay pagnanais na magpalit ng ah, kagampanan ng gobyerno sa usapin ng pabahay sa tuwirang pagpapatupad, patungong pagtimon lamang. Timon o monitoring lamang. Sa halip na gampanan ng gobyerno, ang, ang responsibilidad nito sa mamayan sa pabahay ay binibigay ang nasabing gawain sa ibang entity o pribadong sektor. So di mapapasibalian na hakbang kaugnay ng privatisasyong ito ang pagbuo ng isang sektor, ng isang housing finance system na self-sustaining at private sector-led. Ngayon po, nice pong malaman ang kinatawan na ito. Tama po ba na ang House Bill 6775 o ang Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development ay geared into pushing for more joint ventures with private sector, private-public partnership? O meron po bang local or foreign investors na makakasama rito?
Hindi po. Ang primary aim po ng ating pagbuo po ng departamentong ito, to ensure na 'yung mga pangailangan po ng mga kababayan po natin sa disenting pabahay ay matugunan. Sa ibat ibang pamangmaraan, actually isa sa mga ah, nakasaad po rito, pinapa-indventario ng pamahalaan. Yung lahat ng mga government properties nito. At 'yung mga suitable para sa housing ay magamit para sa housing.
So, 'yung paglilinaw po ng policy framework, ano po ang gagamitin na termino ninyo kaugnay dito? Ito pa ay para sa government mass housing? Ganun po ba?
Kung papasim po ninyo sa laman po ng bill po nito sa section 37, makikita po ninyo dito, 'yung binabanggit ko po kanina na magkakaroon po ang ating gobyerno ng...
Madam Speaker, ginoong sponsor, ano pong linya sa...
Sa section 25 po, nakasaad po dyan Identification Designation of Lands for Human Settlements and Urban and Rural Development. So malino po dyan, binabanggit po niya na iti-designate, for the purpose of designating lands for human settlements and urban and rural development, the DH SUD, the Department of Environment and Natural Resources, the Department of Grand Reform, the Department of Agriculture, the Land Registration Authority, shall jointly identify agricultural lands which under Republic Act Number 6657, as amended ba known as the Comprehensive Grand Reform Law, and other existing laws, rules, and regulations already exempted from conversion. And to ensure that these particular areas or lands will be used primarily for housing. So, hindi po tayo magkakaroon po ng binabanggit po ninyo sapagkat ang primary purpose po natin, kung ano po 'yung existing na government lands, yun po 'yung gamitin po natin para sa, binabanggit din po ninyo na mass housing. Yung financing, meron din po tayo na Social Housing Finance Corporation, na siya po 'yung ah, maga-address nung pangangailangan ng mga beneficiaries in order to fund or to finance your availability of that particular housing units.
Mister, ah, ginoong sponsor, Madam Speaker, nice ko pong itanong na magbabago ba ang mandato ng NHA kaugnay dito, no, sa bill na ito? Ano po 'yung magiging pagbabago dahil meron pong charter ang National Housing Authority? Ano po ang kaugnayan na mangyayari dito sa charter ng National Housing Authority?
Sa kasalukuyan, lahat po ng mga ahensya ng ito, National Housing Authority, Home Guarantee Corporation, National Home Markets Finance Corporation, Home Development Mutual Fund and Social Housing Finance Corporation, na nakasaad sa section 23, will remain to be attached for purposes of policy and program coordination, monitoring, and valuation. As sahatsang gagawin po nila, they will enter into a performance indicators with the department being created at to ensure na 'yung performance contract po nila, based on your mandates, kung ano 'yung mandato po nila na nakasaad po doon, that they're able to deliver. So, kung sa kasalukuyan, wala naman pong ganon, ah, they're free in their own to undertake your respective mandates, Madam Speaker. Mangyayari po dito, mayroon na pong isang departamento na babantay sa kaila. Titingin at to ensure that that particular performance contract is being delivered by that particular agency. So yun po yun, magkakaroon po sila ng kontrata na ito 'yung kanilang idideliver for the next year. So, ganon pa rin pero ah, it will ensure efficiency as well as strengthen accountability within those depart- or those existing agencies that you've mentioned, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, ginoong sponsor, ibig po bang sabihin ninyo ay hindi nagagawa or gagawa pa ba ng mga pabahay para sa pinaka mahihirap natin ang National Housing Authority?
Gagawa po sila, Madam Speaker, at masigit pa sapagkat magkakaroon na po sila ng malinaw na per key indicators, key performance indicators based on sa performance contract po nila. Kung sinabi po nila na isang daang libong units ang kailangang ipoproduce, then malino po na yun dapat ang kailangang ideliver. At mayroong departamento na siyang magbabantay, magmo-monitor whether they're delivering on that particular mandate.
Isa po sa mga inaalala ng National Housing Authority ay kung hindi na sila makagawa ng mga bahay, ano ang mangyayari sa kanilang mga engineers? Ano ang mangyayari sa kanilang mga architect? Ano ang mangyayari sa mga trabaho na iyan?
Ika-clarify po natin, ulitin po natin, gagawa po sila. So, mahang-mali 'yung premise na pinanggagalingan. Actually, sinasabi nga po natin dito, Madam Speaker, it will even strengthen, mas lalaki pa nga actually. Kung sa ngayon, ah, course, kung ilan niyo lang 'yung kaya nila, but of course, 'yung departamento na kinikryte po natin, sila po 'yung mas magpo-push po sa kanila. At the same time, malino po dito, may mga additional staffing patterns at mas may empower po sila actually. Para mas magampanan pa po nila 'yung kailangang mga mandato.
Madam Speaker, ginoong sponsor, nice ko pong malinawan. Meron pong pito na key shelter agencies, right, na narito. Sa mga key shelter agencies, isa po doon ang NHA, tama po ba?
Opo.
Sinasabi niyo po, nakapareho pa rin ang mandato nila, ibig sabihin 'yung pito na yan, alin po ang magbabago? Ah, 'yung lima at 'yung HLURB at tsaka 'yung, 'yung HUDC, ano po ang mangyayari sa kanila?
So basically, 'yung Department of Human Settlements and Urban Development will merge the Housing and Urban Development Coordinating Council and the Housing and Land Use Regulatory Board. So ito po 'yung mag-bubuo ng core, core office nung departamento. At 'yung limang offices, Madam Speaker, the National Housing Authority, Home Guarantee Corporation, National Home Markets Finance Corporation, Home Development Mutual Fund, and Social Housing Finance Corporation na natili po sila sa is. But, ang pinakaiba po nito, mayroon pong departamento na mag-iensure, mag-o-oversee, at mag-iintegrate at mag- it to ensure a comprehensive approach to our housing needs. So, lahat po ng pulisiya ah, mag-iintegrate at may streamline. Yung mga pulisiya ng ibat ibang ahensya po na binanggit po ninyo. At mayroon po sila ngayon na performance contract that they're going to enter into with the department being created to ensure that they will really deliver based on that particular performance contract.
So Madam Speaker, ginoong sponsor, ilan po 'yung maapektuhan na empleyado ng mga ahensya na ito na sinasabi ninyo na ma-streamline? Ilan po silang maapektuhan ng sinasabi ninyong reorganization?
Ulitin po natin dito, ang ini-streamline po natin 'yung proseso, hindi po 'yung mga empleyado o 'yung mga existing na nandun na po. Actually, ang sinasabi po natin dito, ah, kung titinan po ninyo doon sa transitory provision, nandun pa rin po sila. Actually, it's in fact, Madam Speaker, better for the employees, existing employees, because they would actually have the option. If they want to continue serving or working with the government, pwede po yun. Iaaayos lang po doon sa ah, kung saan po sila doon.
Madam Speaker, ginoong sponsor, nice ko pong sabihin na nung nakaraan po ang NHA ay pumasok na sa reorganization. So nagkaroon na po sila ng process. Kung saan lumalabas po na meron tinatawag na CTI na mga regular employees na bumibilang ng, sa ngayon ano, bumibilang po ng 300 plus, 381? O 'yung tinatawag na floating, ito po 'yung naging epekto nung nakaraan. Ngayon po, sinasabi natin na hindi naman maapektuhan. Pero nakalagay po sa section 28, page 22, line 16, absorption or separation from service of employees of the consolidated agencies. Meron pong mga mawawalan ng trabaho doon sa process ng streamlining. Yung existing, nakalagay po dito, the existing employees of HUDC and HLURB shall enjoy security of tenure and shall be absorbed by the department or the HSAC in accordance with their staffing patterns and the selection process as prescribed under Republic Act Number 6656, otherwise known as the Government Reorganization Law. Ngayon, sinabi niyo rin po yun kanina, 'yung employees opting to be separated from the service, pwede silang pumili ng ganon. Yung nangyari na po sa mga CTIs o 'yung tinatawag na co-terminals with the incumbent, nagkaroon na po sila ng floating nga, hindi alam kung saan nilalagay, ano? At nahihirapan po 'yung mga tao na ito sa ngayon, kung ano ang mga, nademoralize sila dahil, alam niyo naman po na nagtatrabaho sila ng matagal, no, sa mga ahensya na yan. Tapos biglang ma-floating sila, anong mangyayari sa kanila? At ngayon, nagsasuggest po kayo ng mga pagbabago na ganito at na nagti-deyak, no, na maaaring ma-separate from service, mawalan ng trabaho, no? Yung ilang mga empleyado, eh paano po kayo nakakasiguro na ito talaga 'yung makakatulong para sa ating mga nandito, no? Na empleyado na sa ahensya?
Maraming salamat po sa iyong paglilinaw. Lilinawin din po natin, sa kasalukuyan, 'yung HUDCC, meron lang 120 po na empleyado. Yung HLURB, mayroon pong 602 na empleyado sa kasalukuyan. Kapag napasa na po 'yung batas na rito, 'yung DH SUD, 'yung department na binubuo po nito, magkakaroon po ng minimum na 700 employees. Yung HAC, 'yung HLURB which will be converted into HAC, magkakaroon po ng minimum na 300. So tinitingnan po natin dito, actually, magkakaroon pa po ng additional na mga 300 employees. So, 'yung ano, agam-agam po ninyo, ah, mukhang ah, papasim po natin dito, na-address po yun, 'yung concern po ninyo. Ngayon, 'yung tanong po ninyo with respect to the floating, mga co-terminals, I suppose, ah, malinaw naman po sa batas po natin, ah, sa kasalukuyan, na kung co-terminals ka malinaw kung hanggang kailan, kagaya rin po nito sa kongreso, 'yung mga staff po natin co-terminals po yan. So, alam din po nila, malinaw po sa kaila, na ang maximum that they can stay in the, in the service is only up to the time na nandoon po 'yung kailang boss. So, I suppose kung ganun po 'yung kalalagayin po nila, at actually, magkakaroon pa po sila ng pakakatuon po ngayon sapagkat dadami nga po 'yung positions that will be available.
Madam Speaker, ginoong sponsor, sa totoo lang po ang mga balita po natin ay demoralize ang mga empleyado at bumababa ang kanilang job satisfaction sa mga naganap. Ngayon, ang tinatanong ko po kanina, paano ma-eensure ng bill na ito na hindi sila mawawalan ng trabaho? Samantalang 'yung sinasabi ninyong staffing patterns, 'yung sinasabi niyong mga performance-based and selection process, ang ineresulta po niyan sa mga na-reorgani- na-reorganization, ah, na-reorganize na mga ah, ahensya ay ah, technically, pagkawala nga ng trabaho. Dahil hindi umaangkop 'yung kanilang mga skills, capabilities, at ayon dun sa performance, ano ba 'yung ano nun? Ah, sa staffing pattern at selection process, hindi sila pumapasok doon. Hindi kaya ang ma-create lang nito ay mas maraming, hindi natin mailalagay na mga empleyado sa trabaho?
Ulitin po natin, Madam Speaker, sabi ko nga po kanina, kung sa kasalukuyan, mayroon lang po silang 700 na employees. Dito sa pagna-approved po 'yung batas na ito, magkagiging mahigit sang libo 'yung available na positions. So ibig sabihin po nun, mas marami 'yung pakakatuon po sa kanila. At the same time, sinasabi rin po natin dito, ah, 'yung security of tenure po nila, mas kinikilala po yun. So kung permanent po sila, they will remain to be permanent. Of course, 'yung concern po ninyo doon sa co-terminals, actually, they will have now more opportunities na mapunta po doon sa more permanent positions because they'll be creating more items for them. Nandales, I suppose, nanggagaling po, Madam Speaker, 'yung concern po ninyo doon sa kasalukuyan na nagkaroon po ng Rat 1 Plan, Rat First Part. At ngayon, ongoing po, halimbawa sa National Housing Authority ng Rat Plan 2. And 'yung kailang General Manager has already created an oversight committee in order to look into the concerns being raised. At kagaya po ng sinasayay po natin kanina, kagaya rin po dito sa kongreso na 'yung binabanggit po ninyo mga co-terminals employees. By the time you accept a co-terminals employment, alam mo exactly kung hanggang kailan ka. Ngayon, magkakaroon pa nga sila ng oportunidad na maging permanente by creating this particular department sapagkat mas lala-dadami 'yung mga available items. Kung sa kasalukuyan, walang permanent available items, dahil nga po mas malit 'yung ahensya na nagahandle po nito, creating this particular department, Madam Speaker, will actually ah, give them more opportunities sapagkat magkakaroon ngayon ng mas maraming items, permanent items for them. At the same time, dahil sila naman po, kung matagal na po sila, binabanggit po ninyo dyan sa departamen- ah, sa opisinang yan, I suppose sila 'yung magiging ah, may leverage po sila at mas may pakakatuon po sila na sila 'yung mas matanggap doon sa mga permanent items. Doon sa mga permanente, wala po tayong usapin po doon sapagkat sinasayay po natin dito sa section na binasa rin po ninyo, kikilalanin ng, kinikilala ng gobyerno 'yung security of tenure po nila.
...implementing programs in coordination with the key shelter agencies. Ito po 'yung housing and real estate development. Letter D, of course, sa kasalukuyan may Homeowners Association and Community Development po tayo. Isa rin po ito sa magiging primary function po ng departamento kini-create po natin. And of course, under letter E, there are a lot of other powers and functions. So makikita po niyo dyan, nakadelineate 'yung mga major functions that will be undertaken by this particular department that is being created. Hindi lang po ito simpleng pagmonitor lang. Yun po siguro 'yung pinanggagalingan po niyo sa kasalukuyan. Then that's exactly bakit natin kailangan ng bagong batas at bago kailangan natin mag-create ng isang departamento. Sapakat sa kasalukuyan, yun po 'yung concern po ng marami na 'yung HUDDCC. Wala na pong ibang ginawa kundi monitoring and coordination. Pero dito, sa sinasabi po natin, malinaw kung ano 'yung functions, ano 'yung kailangan nilang gawin, ano 'yung mga mandato po nila to ensure na 'yung aim po natin that every person magkaroon po ng disenteng bahay under his roof ay magkaroon po ng katuparan.
Madam Speaker, ginong sponsor, ang inaalala po ng kinatawan na ito. Dahil ang gusto po natin ang makinabang primary ay ang ating mga mahihirap na mamayan. Na nasa mandato naman ng National Housing Authority. Ano po, 'yung pinaka-thirty percent ng ano ay dapat magkaroon ng programa para sa pabahay. Eh kung ngayon po ay hindi 'yung natutugunan at ang inireresulta ay malawakang dislokasyon, paano po magiging makakatulong itong struktura na sinasabi niyo kung 'yung mga problema nga sa mga iba't ibang ahensya na dinulog ng mga mahihirap natin ay hindi natugunan, paano pa kaya ito? At ang pangamba po namin, baka hindi naman masa ang makinabang sa ginagawa nating ito. Baka ang mga contractors at developers na naman, ang makinabang sa mangyayari na ito.
Sabi ko nga po kanina, dito sa kini-create na departamento pong ito, magkakaroon po ng performance contract with those agencies na't you mentioned, kagaya ng NHA. At kung sa kasalukuyan, ilang percentage 'yung kailangang nadideliver, of course, nandito 'yung departamento to really mandate and to really ensure that they are able to deliver kung ano 'yung pangailangan po natin. And number two, tamao naman po kayo na ang isa sa primary mandates din po nila, i-address 'yung pangailangan po ng mga talaga mahihirap po natin. Subalit tatanda din po natin na sa kasalukuyan, hindi lang naman po sila 'yung kailangang kliyente. Sapakat marami naman po, even within the middle class, ay hindi po nakakaroon talaga ng opportunity to really have decent homes para sa kanila. So, I suppose it cuts across 'yung kailangang concern. It pertains exactly entirely dun sa pangailangan po ng buong Pilipinas.
Madam Speaker, ginong sponsor, wala pong dinagdag na provision patungkol sa pagbabawal sa mga demulisyon, marahas na pagpapalayas sa mga mahihirap, maliban sa pagbatay din sa batas ng Urban Development and Housing Act of 1992. So wala po tayong inaasahan dito na pagbabago. Ganun pa rin po ang mangyayari. Kasi alam po natin na ang ginagamit din sa malawakang pagpapaalis sa mga ating mga informal settlers ay 'yung UDA ng 1992. Sa mga provision na 'yan, wala po bang idinagdag na iba pang mga provision kaugnay dito?
Madam Speaker, kinikilala po namin na 'yung UDA sa kasalukuyan ay sapat para protektahan po 'yung karapatan ng mga tinatawag po natin na may informal settlers. Actually, hindi na po natin binanggit po dito sapakat malinaw na po kung ano 'yung proseso na pinagdadaanan bago po sila magkaroon ng resettlement or relocation. Ang kailangan lang po sa talaga siguro is to ensure that this particular law is properly implemented. Pero hindi na po siya kailangang banggiten o ulitin because I suppose that would be redundant. Dahil hindi naman po natin binabago po 'yung mga provision po na yun. But at the same time, tatanda po natin may Code of Conduct on Eviction and Demolition Bill naman po tayo. Nakasalukuyan po na dininig po ngayon dun sa kumite.
Yes, alam niyo po, meron kaming mga suggestion din kaugnay dyan sa Urban Development and Housing Act. Dahil ito po ay nahihirapan din ang ating mga mamayan, lalong-lalo na ang complaints ng mga mahihirap nating kababayan kung paano talaga nagagamit sa kanila sa pagpapaalis at paghigit na pagsasamantala sa kanilang karapatan na sa paninirahan 'yung mga ganitong pamamaraan.
Madam Speaker, this representation will gladly accept any proposals. Titinan po natin kung may mas maganda po kayo na proposal to enhance the provisions of this particular bill. We shall gladly...
Madam Speaker, ginong sponsor, maraming salamat po sa pagbubukas ng ganung dialogo at ganung tulong para sa ating mga kababayan na mahihirap. Last point po, ayon sa batas na ito, ang Human Adjudication Commission replaces the function of the actual court system over disputes relating to land and housing. And a representative from the private sector will be instated as a commissioner to handle the disputes. Yun po 'yung nakalagay dun sa ano. Paano po tayong makakasiguro na hindi ito magbubukas sa may mga pansariling interes o corporate point of view sa usapin sa pabahay?
Madam Speaker, tatlong ko lang po kung anong section po 'yung binasa po nila.
Sa HSAC po, sa Adjudication Commission, meron kayong representative from the private sector kasama doon.
I suppose, Madam Speaker, you're referring to Section 14, Letter E. Ang binabanggit po niya dito, "Commissioners, the commissioners must be natural-born citizens of the Philippines of good moral character and have been engaged in the practice of law and a member of the Philippine bar good standing for a period of at least ten years prior to the appointment. Provided that three commissioners, each shall be nominated to the planning sector, urban poor and homeowners association, and the real estate trade or business with experience in urban development, planning, sustainable development, climate change adaptation, disaster risk reduction, and/or real estate development." So sinasabi po natin dito, holistic po 'yung approach po natin na 'yung mga ma-appointed po na commissioners, mayroon po silang mas malawak na pagtingin. Hindi lang po sila nanggaling sa isang sektor na 'yung sektor lang na yun ang kailangang susulong. Kung sinasabi po natin dito, sa isang mas maayos na diskusyon, mas maganda siguro kung nakikita po nila 'yung iba't ibang angulo, iba't ibang perspektibo, perspektibo ng iba't ibang mga sektor sa lipunan. Kaya kung papasin po natin dito, isa lang naman po yun kung sakasakali in order to ensure that that particular discussion noong komisyon na yun ay mas malawak at mas kompresibo.
So ganun nga, Madam Speaker, ginong sponsor, merong representative ng estate developer.
Magkakaroon po, opo?
Sa mga commissioners.
Maharing isa sa mga commissioners. So mayron siyang, at least, sinasabi po natin kanina, hindi lang po isang pananaw, isang perspektibo ang kailangan nilang sundin sa kailangang pagdidiskurso magcost na kukonsidera 'yung iba't ibang aspeto sa lipunan.
Okay, ginong sponsor, Madam Speaker, na isko pong sabihin na itong mga katanungan, kaugnay sa ano 'yung policy framework kung para ito talaga sa mahihirap, hindi pa rin po ganun kakumbinsido ang kinatawan na ito, kaugnay sa mga pino-proposed na pagbabago nito. Sa tingin po namin, mabigat, bibigat lang po lalo 'yung struktura at hindi naman talaga matutugunan 'yung mga basic problems na inihahain ng ating mga mamayan, lalong-lalo na 'yung mga mahihirap nating kababayan. At hindi po kaila sa atin na 'yung pagbubukas ng housing sector sa intervention ng private sector ay hindi naman talaga nagdudulot ng ginhawa at lalo pang nagpapalala noong backlog issue natin ng housing sa bansa. Isa pa po, 'yung mga pinapasok po natin na mga joint ventures na nagpapalayas sa ating mga mahihirap na mamayan, marami-rami po 'yan. Kasi ang mga tinatayong ngayon na mga growth centers na tinatawag, napakarami po 'yan. And mga developed areas, ano po? Kasunod po nito, palaisipan pa rin po sa amin kung ang makikinabang ba talaga dito sa pagpapabigat ng struktura na ito ay masa. O baka mauwi nga naman ulit tayo na mga kontrata or super profit na mga developers ulit ang mangyari. At marami na naman ang, katulad ng lesson natin ng nakaraan, 'yung mga tiwang-wang na bahay nga ngayon, hanggang ngayon nakatiwang-wang pa rin eh, diba? Hindi pa nga natin natutugunan yun eh. So yun po, at 'yung panghuli, 'yung reorganization will not solve 'yung housing problem ng masa natin. Mas sa tingin namin, magmamahal lang 'yung mga pabahay. At ang talagang problema ay 'yung housing framework at 'yung policy talaga natin. Maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker.
Maraming salamat din po, Madam Speaker. Ulitin ko po 'yung sinabi ko na po kanina. Kinikilala po natin, direrespeto po natin 'yung pananaw po niyo, 'yung perspektibo po niyo. Natutuwa po kami na nilahad po niyo dito sa kapulungan kung ano 'yung pananaw po niyo. Subayat mas maganda nga rin po siguro kung mayroon po kayo mas magandang maibibigay po, maimumungkahe tungkol dito sa pagtasap po natin ang bill na ito. Sabi ko nga rin po kanina, bukas po tayo at ikukonsider po natin 'yan. Sa totoo lang po, nakaroon po kami ng mahigit sampung meetings at na mas maganda nga po siguro kung aktibo rin po kayo na nakasali dun sa mga pag-usap po na yun, sa diskurso po na yun. Para 'yung mga pananaw po na binabanggit po niyo ngayon, definitely na-konsider po siya. So muli, maraming salamat po, Madam Speaker.
Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize a gentleman from Parke List, Anak Pawi's Honorable Ayik Casilo for his interpolation.
The Honorable Casilo is hereby recognized for his interpolation.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Will the distinguished sponsor yield to some clarificatory questions? And I promise I will be brief.
Willingly, Madam Speaker.
Distinguished sponsor, I would like to begin my questions with a comparative data of statistics. While my colleague in the Gabriella Women's Party mentioned that there were about 5.9 million informal settlers that are currently in the status of backlog as to the supposed beneficiary of the housing program of our government. Will you agree, do you agree with these current statistics? Or if you have other statistical references, can you provide this representation with the seemingly accurate from the government agency themselves that will be providing such data?
Baso po sa, Madam Speaker, baso po sa datos po ng ating HUDDCC hadsee, lumalabas po na sa kasalukuyan, ang sinasabi po nila, accumulated needs po natin is around 1.4 million housing units, total housing. Although, ang total housing needs from, it's unaccumulated from 2017 to 2022, yun po 'yung binabanggit po niyo na 5.1. So accumulated po yun for the next five years. Sa kasalukuyan, ang kailangan po natin na housing backlog is around 1.4, Madam Speaker.
Ilan po ang target na beneficiary nitong 1.4?
Ayon po sa hadsee, Madam Speaker, based sa budget po na mayroon po tayo ngayon, ang mapoproduce po ito ng 200,000 units.
Ang I was referring to, sa 1.4 million, ilang informal settlers ang magbe-benefit nito? And the target beneficiary will reduce, expectedly, bababa 'yung number of current ang status nila ay mga homeless informal settlers. Am I correct?
Sabi po ng NHA, Madam Speaker, it's a project-based, depende po kung ano 'yung kasalukuyan na budget po nila. At sa kasalukuyan, ang target po nila is around 100,000. Yun po 'yung current na target. Ulitin po natin dahil nga 'yung NHA po ito, sapakat ang sinasabi po natin, depende rin po 'yung mapoproduce po ng NHA, depende sa budget po na inallocate po natin sa kanila.
There comes, dyan po pumapasok 'yung dilemma ng kinatawang ito, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, that of course, under the UDA, 'yung papel po ng pribadong sektor to produce or to construct the necessary housing facilities to accommodate governmently accredited or approved beneficiaries ay dependent una doon sa ano 'yung nakalagay sa budget, 'yung alokasyon. At alam naman po natin ngayon, 'yung alokasyon for the GAA 2018 mababa sa housing agencies dahil nga meron sinasabi na meron pa namang unimplemented. Although, naano na ito, naallocate na ito, marirelease ito kapag natapos na 'yung mga construction. Pero is it not addressing the significant problem in reducing the number of informal settlers? Because dependent 'yung construction natin ng NHA doon sa alokasyon na binigay, ngayon, totoo naman na kada taon at bawat taon tumataas po 'yung bilang ng mga projected beneficiaries. Dahil nga, 'yung kalagayan ng ating maralitang lungsod ay hindi lang naman ito question ng "they are homeless." Masalimut po ang sangasangang problema kung bakit lumulobo ang bilang ng ating mga maralitang lungsod. Naniniwala po ang kinatawang ito na, at batay sa aming pag-aaral, kalakhan ng mga rural poor na nagbabakasakali na pumunta sa mga urbanized cities at mag-venture or 'yung, nakalimutan ko 'yung Tagalog na term na, makikipagsapalaran. At nagdulot ito na silang, dahil walang katiyakan sa kanilang pakikipagsapalaran, magdudulot ito ng palubo o palubo pataas na bilang ng mga informal settlers and homeless poor. My point here, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, how would this bill address the perennial problem of a yearly increasing number of informal settlers? That's one question. In related to that first question, since the policy and program, even if there is a structural change, currently, we have seven shelter agency in addressing these problems. And here, there is a proposal, a law, that will create a super agency or a super department that will establish and that will take care of this particular problem. Now, may I get a answer from the distinguished sponsor with regards to the first question? So that I can eventually proceed with my next question, which is, yun na nga, 'yung papel ng private, although my colleague here already pointed out 'yung agam-agam at 'yung pagtingin natin na ginagawang negosyo, ang serbisyon pabahay na dapat ay pangunahin na responsibilidad ng isang gobyerno. Now, can you provide the answer, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor? How would this bill address the perennial problem of our informal settlers and the ballooning number of a yearly basis of numbers of our informal settlers?
Maraming salamat po dun sa inyong katanungan. Ang representative po na ito, ang, hindi po natin kiniclaim, Madam Speaker, na ito po 'yung panasiya, ito 'yung all cure sa lahat ng problema na kinaharap ng Pilipinas. I suppose, isa lang po ito dun sa mga approaches na ginagawa ng gobyerno at hindi po ito hiwalay dun sa iba't ibang programa at iba't ibang pulisiya na ginagawa ng gobyerno. Kung ang tanong po niyo, paano ito mai-stop 'yung paglobo ng mga tao mula sa pagmamigrate nila, papunta ng Metro Manila, hindi po ito 'yung tugon dun po sa katanungan po niyo. Ang tinutugunan po ng panukala pong ito is to ensure that the existing departments or agencies of the government doon sa pagtasadon sa housing sector, mas maging eficiente po sila, mas maging effective po sila, mas maging affordable 'yung housing at mas marami pang maproduce na housing units para sa kanila. Pero kung stop po sila na pagpunta po rito, hindi po ito 'yung tugon, Mister Speaker, Madam Speaker. At number two, ang production po, housing production, may epekto po 'yung availability po ng lupa. And that's precisely yun po 'yung inadress po ng Section 25 noong batas po na ito. Sapakat yun naman po 'yung, ang isa sa primary na kailangan mo in order to produce a house is the land. And the availability of particular land, yun po ang may direktang epekto kung makakapagproduce ka ba ng isang unit na housing or hindi. And that's precisely, kaya po nilagay po natin 'yung Section 25 po dito na mag-identify at mag-designate ng lands for human settlement and urban and rural development, 'yung departamento pong ito in coordination with the agencies of the government. As well as, papasin po natin dito, of course, kapag na-identify mo po yun, 'yung budget din po, I suppose susunod din po yun. Para, binabanggit din po natin kanina, if we're going to require NHA, for example, to produce more number of houses, dahil mayroon naman po silang available lands na na-identify, na pwedeng gamitin, then susunod po dun 'yung budget na kakailanganin po nila.
Madam Speaker, I thank the sponsor for admitting that this is not an all cure to the existing problem. At sa paniniwala po ng kinatawang ito, bago sana natin or kasabay ng structural na pagsasaayos ng usapin ng mga ahensyang dapat nakatalaga sa pagtugon sa ganitong problema, sana din po ay nakita ang kahalagahan at ang kabigatan ng importance ng salalayan, how the agency will operate. Of course, it will be based on the existing law. Currently, the existing law provides the Urban Development Housing Act. At doon na nga, sa tingin po ng kinatawang ito, malaki at malalim ang problema ng kasalukuyang batas sa usapin ng Urban Development Housing Act na nagulantang tayo at namulat sa kabilang banda. Noong nagkaroon ng malaking pagkilos ang mga maralitang lungsod sa pangunguna ng kadamay na inukupahan nila ang mga tiwang-wang na pabahay sa Pandibulakan. Bago ito ginawa ng kadamay, hindi po nailagay sa pambansang atensyon ang malalim na probleman inilual ng batas ng UDA sa usapin ng sistemang pabahay sa ating bansa. At mabuti po yun na nagiging usapan at naging usapin sa pambansang atensyon that it is high time to review the policies or the laws governing papano naging, naglual ng napakarami o libo-libong mga tiwang-wang na pabahay na sa loob ng limang taon ay hindi inukupahan ng supposed beneficiary. I understand, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, that there is a separate avenue for that and there is a separate approach to address the law, whether or not to amend, to replace the law or to pass a new one with regards to the defects of the Urban Development Housing Act. And Madam Speaker, together with Gabriella Women's Party and the entire Makabayan Block, is currently working on a new bill with regards to repealing the defective provisions of UDA. Pero mahalaga din po, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, na kung hindi naman pala ito a cure-all formula, at ang magiging pagsasaayos lamang nito ay itong pagrationalize as presented by the first objective of this bill, Madam Speaker, to establish an efficient, effective, comprehensive, and integral national local housing. Dahil nga, hiwa-hiwalay ang pitong shelter agencies na ito, kailangan ayusin. Sa totoo lang po, Madam Speaker, maganda sana ang intensyon na magkaroon ng isang ahensyang, nasa kanya ang responsibilidad, buong-buo. Hindi tulad ngayon, meron kang seven shelter agencies na iba-iba ang mandato, iba-iba ang function, 'yung ibang mga kababayan natin ginagawang pingpong ball, pinapapunta sa NHA, pinapapunta sa iba't ibang ahensya, at hindi malinaw 'yung particular and distinctive function of each agency. Maganda sana yun, pero nakatali, and definitely the sponsor, the distinguished sponsor will agree, nakatali pa rin naman ang batayang orientasyon ng panukalang batas na ito sa batas ng UDA. Am I correct?
Madam Speaker, lilinawin po natin ulit at ang kini-create po natin dito 'yung departamento. At 'yung UDA po, at natutuwa po tayo na nabanggit po ng kinatawan ng Anak Pawi's na meron po silang panukala para amendahan po 'yung UDA. Ikatutuwa po ng representative din na ito na mabasa po 'yan at hopefully, kung ito nga, 'yan nga po 'yung magiging tugon o sagot dun sa mga kinikilala po natin na problema sa kasalukuyan, eh matutuwa po tayo at sana nga po makakaasa rin po kayo na susuportan po ng representative na ito.
Salamat po, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor. Nabanggit po ng ating kagalang-galang na sponsor para pabilisin ang proseso. Isa pong tuminkad sa aking pakikinig kanina sa sagutan, sa interpolasyon, at sagot ng ating kagalang-galang na sponsor, 'yung to fast track and to ensure efficient process. Lalo pa, dahil isang departamento na 'yan, ay hindi na mawawala na 'yung agam-agam na pasa-pasa sa mga iba't ibang ahensya. Sana din po, hindi mapapastrack nito ang mga demulisyon. Alam naman po natin, bagamat meron tayong standing policy ngayon, no demolition if no relocation, pero alam naman natin na naiikutan 'yan tulad ng ginagawa o nagawa sa pasig. 'Yung mga nasa danger zone po, floodway pasig, na by act of the local government, naisagawa nila itong pagdedemolish. And unfortunately, there are still a lot of the victims doon sa marahas na demulisyon sa floodway na nagkakampo pa ngayon sa Mindiola dahil nga hindi malinaw 'yung usapin ng relocation, 'yung usapin ng papano pakikinggan ng ating mga ahensya ng gobyerno. Ang usapin ng, kapag ito ay act of the local government, hindi ito 'yung requirements ng, meron 'yung prepared relocation, take it or leave it. If you leave it, ito 'yung perang ibibigay, demolish ka. After matanggap 'yung pera, bahala ka na sa buhay mo. My fear, the fear of this representation, Madam Speaker, baka din mai-streamline at mas mapabilis ang mga ganitong kalagayan na magdudulot ng mabilisan din pero at ngunit marahas na mga pamamaraan ng demulisyon. May I get the comment of the distinguished sponsor?
Madam Speaker, natutuwa po tayo na kinikilala po ng kinatawan mula sa Anak Pawi's ang napakagandang intensyon po ng panukalang batas na ito, na streamline po 'yung proseso. Hindi ka na po kailangan magkaroon ng pingpong, pumunta sa iba't ibang ahensya ng gobyerno. Sapakat meron na pong isang... sapakat meron na pong isang departamento na siyang mag oversee to ensure o so na streamline 'yung proseso at naaaddress 'yung concern immediately ng mga kliente, ng mga tao. But at same time, 'yung agam-agam po ng kinatawan mula sa Anak Pawis, pinapawi po natin ito sapakat sinasabi naman po natin na kung ano 'yung protection that being afforded to them by the Urban Development Act, Housing Act, malanatili po yun. Ngayon, of course, alam ko naman, nabanggit din po ninyo na may mga concerns po kayo doon sa batas po na yun, at may mga sinasabi po kayo na ipapanukala po kayo para amendahan po ito para mas mapaganda pa 'yung mga provision po nito. Sabi ko nga po kanina, natutuwa po tayo na may ganong proseso po at meron po kayong ganong ipapanukala, at ang representation na ito, sabi ko rin po kanina, I definitely will support that particular proposed measures in order to strengthen the provisions of the udha.
Ang inaalala ko po, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, dahil nga, sa lalayang batas pa rin ang udha, at malinaw naman po sa inyong first page ng chapter one, sa Declaration of Policy, "The state shall by law and for the common good undertake in cooperation with specific highlight, in cooperation with the private sector, a continuing program of housing and urban development." Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, this representation, frankly speaking, and honestly speaking, cannot harmonize the different interests of a market-driven housing project and a supposed government-driven housing project to cater one and the same urban poor beneficiaries, the homeless poor. Whether we like it or not, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, there is really a major difference as to the interest they represent. Government can really pursue a housing program free from any market-driven private entities. Likewise, private entities can pursue, most especially when the government requires them. Yan po 'yung matagal ng problema sa usapin ng serbisyon pabahay sa kasalukuyan na karaang mga rehimen, na karaang administrasyon, at ang kasalukuyan. But then again, my third, my second to the last question, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, in your definition, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, of human settlement, to quote, "Human settlements refers to the integrative concept that comprise of: A. Physical components of shelter and infrastructure; B. Community services to which the physical elements provide support such as education, health, culture, welfare, recreation, food, and nutrition." Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, there is a significant element lacking or missing. The definition of the bill misses the point that integral component should include livelihood and employment. Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, the very reason why urban poor subjected to demolitions, to negotiations of relocation, is too far from the very source of their livelihood. Marami pong mga kadahilanan kung bakit bumabalik ang ating mga kababayan na bikti man ng demolisyon o may offer ng relocation dahil sa malayong pinagkikitaan o hanapbuhay. That is the very reason why relocated and the perennial problem of our relocated in relocation sites remain unaddressed because of the lack of component of livelihood and employment. May I know from the distinguished sponsor, Madam Speaker, why is it so that a very important component in human settlement, employment or livelihood, is not part of the definition of terms in your bill?
Madam Speaker, doon sa binasa po ng kinatawan mula sa Anak Pawis, malinaw po 'yung sinasabi niya, "Human settlements refer to the integrative concept that comprise of: A. Physical components of shelter and infrastructure; And community services to which the physical elements provide support, such as education, health, culture, welfare, recreation, food, and nutrition." Ang papansinin po natin dito, 'yung phrase na ginamit po dyan, "such as", hindi naman po niya sinasabi na ito lang po yun. Ngayon, kung nais po ninyo na include po 'yung livelihood, 'yung employment, by all means, um, Madam Speaker, ah, pagpasok po ng ating superior amendments, we shall certainly welcome those specific amendments that you will propose, Mr. Speaker. Number two, 'yung binabanggit niyo kanina with respect dun sa in cooperation with the private sector, ah, paalala lang din po, siguro, nais ko rin to point out na yan po ay nakasulat din, nakasad po sa konstitusyon. Wala naman po tayong binago, kinope lang naman po natin. So I suppose, 'yung batas po na pinupropose po natin dito, nakangklarin po mismo sa konstitusyon po natin.
Thank you very much for that possible suggestion, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor, that this representation in the proper time probably will propose such an amendment, but, um, I would, gusto ko hin ko pong malaman, is what, uh, intentional ba na kalimutan or talagang for the sake of interpretation of "such as", ay hindi inilagay, knowing the fact that ito naman 'yung parating paulit-ulit na problema ng ating mga relocated? But probably the cure will be in the period of amendment, which I probably will consider. But again, mahalaga po yun dahil nga, sa mismong batas nga ng udha, nakalimutan na rin yan eh. Hindi nga nakalagay dyan, no?
Madam Speaker, sabi ko nga po kanina, hindi naman po kabuan po yan, kaya ginamit po dyan "such as". Natutuwa po tayo, nanirin, kinol po 'yung atensyon po natin ng ang kinatawan po mula sa Anak Pawis, and certainly, kagaya rin po ng binabanggit po ninyo, ah, doon sa udha mismo, wala po yun. So I suppose, ah, it's high time for us to include that as well.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, distinguished sponsor. My other question was already raised by my colleague with regards to the displacement, the possible displacement of our government employees. However, there is a provision of absorption, but in lieu with the existing right sizing law and the possible enactment of the right sizing law or the operation of the right sizing law, um, we will really expect loss of jobs from, of course, the seven shelter agencies. From the data that I, from the information I have, I don't know, if I'm mistaken, almost 7,000, no? Sa lahat po, sa pitong shelter agency, from director, assistant director, regular rank and file, job orders, and contract of service. Definitely, whether we like it or not, tanggapin man natin o hindi, mamalalagas ito, malalagasan ito, and especially pag-in invoke ang right sizing law, mas matindi pa ang, liliit pa ang bilang ng ating mga, sa halip na sana ay i-absorb at gawing regular, dahil alam naman natin, malaking employer ang ating gobyerno sa mga kontraktual na empleado. Now, my last point, Madam Speaker, we maintain the struggle for a people responsive, especially the urban poor responsive program of the state of the government with regards to addressing the housing problem is not an independent or a separate issue. Gaya ng aking binanggit sa unang pagtatangong, masalimo't po at kabit-kabit po ang mga probleman ito. Urban development requires not only an efficient and effective urban planning. Essentially, it requires addressing not only the problem in the urban centers, but most especially the problem in the rural part. Mahalaga po na kakabit nito ang usapin ng tunay na reforma sa lupa. Mahalaga po nakakabit nito ang usapin na makamamayan talaga at government-initiated na katugunan sa serbisyon panlipunan. Again, Madam Speaker, the bill may only address structural problem, but the perennial and the chronic problem lies partially and major part of the law of udha, but the system itself requires a revision and a necessary genuine change. Maraming salamat po sa mga kasagutan ng ating kagalang-galang na sponsor at sa pagkakataon na marinig ang mga agam-agam at katanungan ng sektor na kinakatawanan ng kinatawang ito. Maraming salamat, Madam Speaker.
Madam Speaker, maraming-salamat din po sa representative na Anak Pawis. Muli, inulit po natin 'yung kanilang pananaw, kinikilala po natin ito at nirespeto po natin ito. At 'yung kailangang mga panukala, binabanggit po nila kanina, ah, pagbabago ng mga pananaw o pagbubuo ng mga bagong framework, ikatutuwa po natin ito at definitely, this representation would definitely uh, support those particular measures as well once they submit it and for discussion. We will definitely welcome all those proposals as well, and we shall consider them within the committees for discussions. Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we recognize the lady from Parkland's Gabriela, the honorable Emmy de Jesus, for her manifestation.
Uh, thank you.
The honorable Emmy de Jesus is recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, uh, ginong sponsor. Una po, bago po 'yung aking make manifestation, gusto ko pong kilalanin ang presensya noong ilang matyagang. Nagintay dito ng mga stakeholders natin, ano, galing sa ahensya na, ah, sabi nga kanina, ay kinakabahan doon sa magiging epekto noong reorganization, at 'yung ating ilang grupo ng mga, hanggang ngayon, ay nakabitin 'yung paglutas doon sa kanilang housing problems. Kaya kinikilala ko po ang kanilang presensya. Ang manifestation pong ito ay apagsusog doon sa mga nabanggit na rin ng ating mga naonang interpolators na unang-una, ang gusto kong bigyang pansin, hindi nilulutas ng simpleng reorganisasyon 'yung malalim na problema ng isang mayor na batayang karapatan ng marami nating mamamayan ang usapin ng pabahay. At kung doon po sa balangkas, ano, 'yung frame o framework, kung, ang napansin ko po, dito sa Declaration of Policy, nabanggit doon, 'yung continuing program, ang gusto kong itala o erhistro, saan kayo magsisimula o saan sisimulan, ano? When in fact, the ongoing programs that we have now are, as mentioned, hindi talaga ito naglilingkod sa mamamayan, kaya anong ba ang kahulugan ng continuing program? Will this resolve the, will the reorganization resolve the problem? At 'yung pong binanggit din doon sa framework, 'yung productive economic activity and is led by market forces, medyo nakakabahala ito eh, kasi ibig sabihin ito, prevailing pa rin talaga ang value o ang magiging dominant pa rin ang papel ng merkado o 'yung mga negosyante. Ang ikatlong punto po ay 'yung kaugnay ng guarantee the preservation of agricultural lands necessary for food security. Eh, noong pong panahon pa ni Ramos, 'yung inilunsad po niya 'yung PDP, no? Ah, at nagkaroon talaga ng massive na land conversion at marami na, ano pa? Ang garantiya, no, o ano 'yung ipipreserve natin na lupa na necessary for food security, when in fact, hanggang ngayon nga, ano, patuloy ang land conversion. At panghuling punto po, ah, 'yung alam natin na inaprubahan na pangunahin at flagship program ng Panggulong Duterte ay 'yung kanyang build-build-build program. Ano ang magiging kaugnayan nito? Dito sa inihahain na panukalang batas na magkakaroon ng tunggalian at lalabas, hindi magiging, wala rin namang epekto sa ikabubuti ng ating mamamayan dahil naririan ang isang programa na sabi nga namin, baka instead na build-build-build, ay maging destroy, destroy, destroy. So sa bahaging ito, Madam Speaker, aginong sponsor, itinatalapo ng representasyong ito, ang manifestation yon, at nakahanda po kami ng patuloy na pakikipag-usap sa mga stakeholders para sa kanilang kahingian, kung mayroon man tayong mga, para po maibahagi at maipahayag 'yung mga nais nating baguhin o amyandahin. Maraming salamat po.
Muli, Madam Speaker, nagpapasalamat rin po tayo sa manifestation po ng representative ng Gabriela. Nagpapasalamat po tayo sa kailangang mga manifestation at please be assured, we take note of all of this. At the same time, 'yung mga panukala po ninyo, makakasa po kayo, we highly welcome them. At kung mas may mga pamoran pa po kayo, na mas ma-enhance po natin, 'yung provision po ng batas na pinapanukala po dito, ay welcome na welcome po. Maraming salamat, muli.
Thank you, majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, there being no other member who wishes to interpolate, I move to terminate the period of sponsorship and debate, so move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the period of interpolation is hereby closed.
Madam Speaker, I move that, I move that we suspend consideration of House Bill number 6775, so move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, consideration of House Bill number 6775 is hereby suspended.
Madam Speaker, included in the business of the day is House Resolution number 1614. I move that the Secretary General be directed to read the title of the House Resolution, so move, Madam Speaker.
The Secretary is directed to read the title of the resolution.
House, House Resolution number 1614, resolution expressing the profound condolences of the House of Representatives to the family of engineer Oscar Arzamiento, father of Edgar Mary Arzamiento, representative of the First District of Samar, and Melton and Arzamiento, former member of the House of Representatives and former DILG secretary.
Majority floor leader.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adopt House Resolution number 1614, so move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, House Resolution 1614 is hereby adopted.
Madam Speaker, I move that we include additional co-authors to House Bill number 6306, as contained in the list to be submitted by the Committee on Rules, so move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none, the authors of House Bill number 6306 are hereby included and added.
Uh, Madam Speaker, I move for the change of referral of the following measures. House Bill number 4108, from the Committees on Basic Education and Culture and Higher and Technical Education, to the Committees on Higher and Technical Education and Basic Education and Culture.
Any objections? Hearing none, the transfer is hereby noted and ordered.
House Bill number 5752, from the Committee on Natural Resources, to the Committee on Transportation.
Any objections? Hearing none, the change of referral is hereby made of record.
And House Bill number 6761, from the Committee on Appropriations, to the Committee on Revision of Laws.
Any objections? Hearing none, the change of referral is hereby made of record. Any objections? Hearing none. The change of referral is hereby made of record.
Madam Speaker, before we approve Journal number 53 dated January 23, 2018, I move that we amend the same to correct the entry therein to reflect the attendance of Representative Eleanor Bulutbeg Tang who was inadvertently marked as absent by the secretary at. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none. The the proposed amendment to the journal is hereby noted and made of record.
Madam Speaker, I move that we approve Journal number 53 dated January 23, 2018 as amended. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none. The journal as amended is approved. Journal dated January 23, 2018 is hereby approved as amended.
Madam Speaker, earlier we adopted House Resolution number 1614. I move that we adopt the same in consolidation with House Resolution number 1606. So move, Madam Speaker.
Any objections? Hearing none. The consolidation of the two measures is hereby approved.
Madam Speaker, I move that we adjourn session until January 29 at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So move, Madam Speaker.
Session is adjourned until 4 o'clock on January 29, 2018.